But I also think too, we have to be mindful to make sure that we don't have fatigue. And making sure that that we are addressing the budget issues. And also concerns that, you know, there might be in our everyday lives as we're in our jobs, especially because we are in the service industry. So the the thing that I've always loved about my time on council and and working with staff is that can do attitude, that no matter what or what obstacles we have, it's a can do. And I really feel bad for picking on poor Jeff. Because he's he's not here today, but you know, one of the things he's in a very, and I don't know if the public understands this, he is in a unique position because while the library is funded with an enormous amount of taxpayer dollars, there's also a whole other board and set of ideas that he also reports to. So how does how does that right now in the budget season? How do we talk about that? And my concern is, you know, Mr. Roloff, is that we're kind of open, but we're not really open. And that is a major area that our public, our citizens really depend on. But we also have to acknowledge that there may also be some staff concerns of people that might be highly susceptible or have issues in which, you know, something like COVID could be very difficult to work with. And so I would encourage not just the library, but all areas that no matter what, despite the challenges we're going through, it's always a can do attitude. Because I think at the end of the day, we we have the resources, both intellectually as well as, you know, from the cares that hopefully will supplement that. And so, you know, I would like to see potentially maybe some discussions about what what would it look like to be able to do a little bit more in an area that's already exhausted, right? So those were just some some comments that I wanted to make as we move forward into today. I will try to be more likely to engage. This whole scenario here is not my communication love language. It's one on ones and in person. So but I will try to do a better job of showing up for you, Mark, and staff today and ask questions today. Because I should have brought this up yesterday when Jeff was present. So my apologies to Jeff for not speaking up and waiting till today. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Allison Asby for sharing those thoughts. It is an awkward format, of course, we're all trying to get used to. And appreciate the thoughts and hopefully folks will, like I say, unmute and feel free to jump in just like we do in person. It's a little trickier when folks are talking over each other with the with the screens because I'm looking at something on the screen that says who's talking and I may not be able to identify that immediately. Tony is hosting and he sometimes, you know, will send me a chat message that creeps up very or flashes very quickly about somebody having a hand raised. But so we'll get through this and it's it went pretty well yesterday, but hopefully people are feeling more comfortable about jumping in and asking the questions that need asked. All right.
I'll start, Madam Mayor, first in response. Thank you. Here's, this has been a challenging times, but you know, our weekly staff meetings have been virtual since since March. And we devote time to what are we doing? What can we do better? How can we help each other more? Continue challenging us, please, because we're, we don't have all the answers. We really don't. Just before you logged on, Deb, we were talking about we had Jake, what did you say? Fifty people in line as you were walking in to vote today? And we have an obligation to serve our public. But to serve that part of the public, we closed the rest of City Hall for public. But we challenge everybody. What can you do to better serve people? And we've done some really cool things. I think John Zarotti talked about it a little bit yesterday. Jim and his staff are going to talk a little bit today about that. Another challenging one, Brad Larson's online in an hour, you'll be hearing from him. That's even more challenging than the than the library, to be honest with you. And you and everything you heard about the library with and everything you've commented on is totally legit. And that's the struggle that that Jeff has because Jeff's staff is so committed to serving the public. But at the same time, they're humans and they're concerned about their safety. They're concerned about the safety of their their patrons. So it is a tough challenge. So please ask us because this is, we work through this by talking through it. And and this isn't the same as Deb and I've said, you know, we can solve a lot of things over a blue moon, but we don't have that luxury. Although there's one in my refrigerator, but it's a little early for that. But we have to find a good substitute. So thank you. Thank you, Mayor, for keeping things flowing. Thanks to all the council members. I didn't think there was a lot of talking over. There is a little feature. If you put in the primary speaker pops up, but then you don't get to see everybody's Brady Bunch face. But you have the you have the option of that. But with that, it's time for transportation. Jim and Brian, I see both you guys are unmuted. I would suggest if you're not presenting that you mute, you'll be doing everybody else a favor when you do that. And even things like my phone ding during during that. So Jim, if you want to take it away, again, please direct the council to whatever page that you're referring to because that happens the same way, whether we're in person or virtual. But if somebody's not catching up in a virtual mode, they really fall behind quicker than they do in person. So please refer to the pages if you can. So Jim, take it away. Thank you.
Sure. I'll try to go in order, but just first overall, just introduction. So as most of you know, the Transportation Department, so we have three main divisions. So I'll just introduce who we got on. And I'll try to kind of go in order where we go through the budget. But we have five budgets we'll be going over. We have the Electric Department. So Dan Scooter Cusman, who's on, is our Electric Traffic Manager. So he oversees our Electric as well as our Street Lighting. So we have those two budgets. And then we have Brian Griesbach, who wears a couple of different hats. He's mainly our Transit and Maintenance Manager. But he also oversees our Sign and Street Lighting, or not Sign, Street Lighting, our Sign and Street Painting Divisions. So his costs are all allocated in Transit, but he also oversees the Sign Budget. And then we have Steve Thomasick, who is our Transit Operations Manager. So he oversees a lot of the Transit Operations, but he also does a lot of work on our Grants. He's also our Transit Safety Manager. So he's wearing a lot of different hats as well. And then I obviously oversee the division. In addition to those divisions, I also do our Traffic Engineering, which my time isn't allocated anywhere other than Transit for that, as well as our Parking Utility. And there's no allocation for my time for that in the parking budget either. So we're all wearing a few different hats. So, you know, we try to be as efficient as possible. I think the city gets some pretty good value that way. And so far, we've been able to manage that pretty well. So with that being said, we'll go over the, we have the five budgets to go over. Like I said, we'll start with Electric, which is on page 121 to 124. These, the first, well, for the most part, all of our budgets, there's nothing really exciting. They're all status quo. We haven't proposed any budgeted increases or decreases in service. Our Electric Division, for the most part, is labor. I mean, we have Scooter who oversees the division, and then we have four electricians. All the labor for that division is in the Electric Budget. Although like Scooter would like, like to always remind us that this, the Street Lighting, the electricians oversee that that as well, but there's no labor allocated to Street Lighting. That's just kind of the way we've done it. So but Electric, there really isn't anything real notable. This year, we worked on, you know, they they work real closely with the street reconstructions. So currently, just got the signals up and working again on Oregon and 24th as well as 20th. We've done some upgrades there. We now have the Grid Smart Camera Systems, which we've been putting in at our newer intersections, which allow us to not only manage the traffic flow, they also allow us to get some traffic counts and some turn account movements. So if we need those, like we're currently doing, working with a consultant to evaluate South Main Street for possibly going to one lane in each direction. We were able with our new traffic, Grid Smart Traffic Cameras, to give them some of that data so we didn't have to pay them to collect it because we already have it from those Grid Smart Cameras that we put in on South Main Street a couple of years ago. So that's something nice and that I know council has seen the budget request for those with some of the street or street reconstructions. So upgrading those camera systems has helped us with that. And it also helps us with eliminating nighttime flash. Historically, when we didn't have cameras at night, we would put the signals and you'd see the flashing red, you know, basically overnight. Whereas now, we can just let the cameras do the work. So if they detect vehicles, it'll turn the the side street green if needed, but otherwise the main street stays green. So that's been kind of a nice feature over the last couple of years with upgrading that traffic signal, those camera systems. And it also improves our safety because we do normally have a little bit of higher crash rate when the signals are in flash. And Scooter's Division also works closely with other city departments. Some of the other things they've done are, they've worked on the lighting at the Little Oshkosh Playground. They've worked on the weight room at the Police Department, the computer lab at the Police Department. They've done a lot at the Fire Department Buildings. As we get sidewalk replacement, they generally work hand in hand to create some of our underground facilities with that as well. So Scooter's pretty good at, he keeps his ear to the ground and he, they try to get in there and upgrade our facilities whenever there's a street under construction, sidewalks under construction. So we're constantly upgrading our infrastructure. So those are the highlights of the Electrical Budget. The only other thing that, oh, I didn't mention that they also do is maintaining the city's fiber optic network. We've done a, Scooter did quite a bit of work and his guys did this year with the Museum project. So I know that Public Works did a lot of work there as well, but they were able to help and upgrade some of our fiber optic communications in conjunction with that project. So that's, that's kind of the highlights of Electric. If anyone has any questions for Scooter or I. Okay. Seeing none, I guess I'll move on then to the the Sign Budget, which is on page 125 through 127. The Sign Division, again, it's a status quo budget. Basically, we have two Sign and Street Painters. So what they do is in the summer season, for the most part, but it goes a little bit into the spring and fall as well, that we have the Street Painting Season. So they're upgrading all of our Street Painting. We have two full time positions in that in this division. And then in the off season or the non Street Painting Season, then what they're doing is they're upgrading our signs and replacing them as needed, as well as constructing any new signs. Some of the things that they've done over the years are we've done the parking lot signs, we've done the historic street signs. We've done, more recently, I know Brian works a lot with the Parks Department, does a lot of signage for them, as well as the Streets Division. So again, we do a lot of things for whatever signage needs there are throughout the city. We've done some stuff for Pam lately for the elections, as well as some of the signage at City Hall. They also work on the bus stop signage. We replaced all those a couple of years ago to new reflective material. And every 10 years for reflectivity, we're required by law to replace the signs to make sure they maintain reflectivity. So to make sure that we're maintaining that, we also have GPS in an inventory of all the signs in the city so they can keep track of when they've been through their 10 year cycle and we need to replace that backing. So in addition to those two full time people, then we generally hire two part time seasonals that help with the Street Painting in the summer. And that helps us be a little more efficient because then the full time person can be do driving the Street Painting Truck or doing the painting while the the seasonal person will be helping doing coining or putting down beads and some of the stuff that doesn't require quite as much skill. So then we can send two crews out at once and it it's a lot more efficient that way. We've had a younger crew the last few years, which is good and bad. I mean, the good of, the good part of it is, it's good, they're energetic, they're generally working pretty fast paced and pretty hard. The downside to that is we've experienced some turnover as the younger people have opportunities to move up in their career. Obviously, they don't tend to stay quite as long. So we've been fortunate that we've had some, a good young crew for the last couple of years. And we've had, like I said, it's, it's good and bad when you get a younger crew in there. So but we've been happy with what we've been able to accomplish with the crews we've had so far. But again, it's pretty much status quo budget. One of the nice things with our paint is the last year or two, we buy our paint through the through estate contract and they switched the vendor a couple of years ago to one that was a little less expensive. We were a little concerned at the start. However, that paint has been doing really well. It's actually been doing better than the paint we had a few years ago and it's cheaper. So that's allowed us to get a little bit more done without increasing the budget. So I know that Brian's been thankful for that as well. So that's the Sign Budget, Street Painting. If there are any questions for Brian.
Yeah, this is Mike here. Just looking at your revenue side, the health insurance, I just noticed that originally in 2020, you had budgeted $23,400, which was more than double what you did in 2019, but you didn't come anywhere near that. Just curious what's going on there.
Yeah, that would be for the the staff turnover. We had two full time people that were on our insurance and then we hired a, one of those people left, hired somebody that again is a little bit younger, that's on their parents' insurance.
Okay, so it looks like that's staying low going forward to for that.
Okay. We budget, basically, we budget for what our staff is as of today. If there's a vacancy, we budget for the family plan because we don't know who we'll hire. So that's just generally how we do it. Generally, there's an up or down. There's always a little story behind them.
That's why I'm here to ask, Mark.
Yeah, there's always a story. So but life changing events are reflected there. So yeah, just those things happen.
Yeah, and we will, so we will be replaced, we actually just hired a new person. However, the person that's staying is the younger person that's on their parents' health insurance and he's only like 20, so he'll be on it for a few more years.
Speak up. I didn't want to cut Mr. Ford off. So so just a quick question regarding our signs and the replacement. How much of our, how many of our signs or what percentage is based on wear and tear versus those that come along and permanently borrow signs?
Yeah. Brian, you want to answer it? You gotta unmute. There you go.
Sure. Most of our signs, unless it's around the college area, usually end up just fading out over time. Of course, there's always accidents that play into that, but they're on the college areas where we have our most problems with signs going missing. And those typically, we see that typically when they move in, the parking signs go missing, things of that nature. So we're constantly keeping an eye in the on that area just for missing signs.
What it, so but like out of 100% of our signs that are replaced, what percentage is just due to that they're simply missing?
I would say probably only about 10%.
Okay. That sounds good.
Yeah.
Well, if Scooter, if Scooter knew what he was doing, he'd hook up some electricity to a few of those signs.
There you go.
Kidding.
Yeah, well, actually, that question, you know, when you talk about the knock, I thought you were going knockdowns, because knockdowns are more about Scooter's territory because knockdowns on signals and street lights are probably a bigger problem than even signs. Because Brian, it's normally a four by four and a sign and we, he can, he can replace those pretty easily. Scooter's stuff, and we are, you look at Scooter's body language, he just perked up. But knockdown, knockdowns are a big issue and collecting on those. And every once in a while, you'll see him on the roundabout, right, Brian? In the wintertime.
So do we, so do we get reimbursed through, say, the driver's insurance? Or does that come straight out of like our funds?
A lot of, yeah, if they catch him, there's a police report and they can go after him.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. So that's the Senate Street Painting. The next budget will be the Street Lighting Budget, which is pages 155 and 156, I believe. And that, again, that that budget is pretty much, it is status quo. Really, the only thing really in that budget is, for the most part, it's electricity. There's a little bit of supplies and parts, but the majority of like the street lighting poles and things like that are handled through the capital budget. So really, the, the, over the years, we've upgraded to where we can to LED lights, the ones that the city owns anyway. So we've, we've basically received most of those savings that we could for, as far as electricity for the city owned streetlights go. So that budget, the only really way to decrease that budget is taking streetlights out, which isn't really a popular proposal generally.
Hey, Jim, why don't you or Scooter talk a little bit about the Solar Light Pilot Program?
Sure.
Not a ton of money, but it's a, you know, in terms of lighting, that's, that's about, with LEDs, pretty much, we've done a good job of switching over to LEDs. So now it's like, what's next? And the solar light is probably our next, next frontier.
Sure. Yeah, I'll just give you a high level overview and Scooter could go into a little more detail if you'd like. But but basically, we're looking, we don't have any solar streetlights currently, so we're looking, we actually are looking to pilot a program with the new development out on its west of Oakwood and Ninth. Scooter will probably tell me exactly what the name is, but work with the contractor to pilot putting in solar streetlights for that subdivision, as well as over on, Scooter will have to remind me the name of the street. But there's also a street on the south, east side of the city, where we're looking to put in solar street work network. That would only be a few lights, but the development will be, the whole development, it's a little bit less cost for the contractor, but that also gives us an opportunity to test how well those solar lights function. We had them put in the crossings as well in case, as a backup, in case those solar lights don't work as we anticipate. But Scooter, you can tell us a little bit more about.
Yeah, so so we're gonna, we're gonna try Pickard Estates, which is the one off of Ninth Street, west of Oakwood, like Jim mentioned. We're gonna work with the contractor, the developer, I should say. The developer's responsible as part of their development to put in an underground street lighting system that the city will obviously pay the electricity on and maintain from that point on. And the Pickard Estates seem like a good, a good spot for us to try a solar program. There's, currently, there's, there's, there's no trees at this point. So I've contacted a few different vendors to see, you know, what, what works, what doesn't work. And luckily enough, I ended up talking to an engineer that went to college in Madison. So he knew our freeze thaw cycle, our winters, our winter cycle, that kind of stuff, which in the northern part of the country is a little bit harder solar wise, just because of the amount of charge time we can get in the wintertime. So he was very knowledgeable with the area and he was very helpful. So we're working on that project. And the other one Jim mentioned is Gibson Court, which is off of Highway 45. Somewhere around like we're behind the Beach Comer area. It's a development that kind of slipped through the cracks quite a few years ago with no lighting out there. So it's also a very good area for us to try an underground, a solar installation. Obviously, we, we save the installation cost, which is the, I shouldn't say installation, the underground cost, the conduits, the wire and electric service, which are the, you know, a very expensive part of an installation. So we're trying to, we're trying to utilize the solar where we can. We still have, we still, pointing solar doesn't mean there's no cost. Obviously, we have those same issues you have with anything. You know, batteries only last eight to 10 years. So you have to replace batteries and they're fairly expensive, but when you, when you do the math, it's still a cheaper system. You have disposal of the batteries. So so solar doesn't come, I shouldn't say, solar doesn't come free, maintenance free long term. So but just to correct Jim a little bit, we, in the street lighting, we don't have any solar, but we, we do have other solar installations throughout the city in school flashers and the RFPs that you see in some locations are, are solar. So anyways, if there's any questions, that's, that's kind of where the, we're, we're trying to go with the solar. It's, it's not as easy. Again, it's trying to figure out which, you know, which lights we use, which system we use, and then how do we write a spec for that? And, you know, because when we do the spec, we, we could open it up, you have to open it up to everyone, which may not have the same features as somebody else. So so I've got a little bit more research to do behind some of that. So but we are gonna, we are gonna try a pilot program here.
Scooter, I know we talked about solar a couple of years ago and at that point, you weren't really a fan. So I'm really glad that we're starting to try that. And I'm appreciating the fact that as we're looking at, you know, as we're doing expansion and growth on the outskirts, that we're looking to, you know, attempt that. I guess the question kind of comebacks comes back to, you mentioned that it's easier in location where there aren't trees and that. But what is, what about as far as like retrofitting existing light poles? I think when you and I talked about it a couple of years ago, that was a bit of a problem. So is that why this is more of an opportunity? It's because we are building new and it's more costly or difficult to retrofit the existing streetlight poles?
Well, it more, it gets more into the amount of, of time that the solar panel can recharge the batteries throughout the day. So if we went into an existing neighborhood with a lot of, you know, mature trees, it, the system can't get enough charge time to read, to recharge the batteries to, you know, to operate, you know, most of the systems now will operate a couple of days without a charge. But they, there's games, getting back to a few years ago, solar, solar technology, and I think Mark kind of touched on it, solar technology kind of goes hand in hand with LED technology. And again, we're basically, you know, LEDs, an electronic device where the old tried and true lighting is very, very reliable. But with the LED, you, you have to play games with the LED to, so that it will light all night long. So you're doing things with motion detection, you're doing, there's a, there's a lot of new sensors out there now that the light will drop to, say, 50% light output when it doesn't see motion for so many minutes. And then what will happen is it instantly goes to full brightness when it sees motion and then it stays on. So there's, there's, there's some things that have to be done to, to make that, you know, the burn time, we call it. And in this part of the country, our burn time is almost, almost to the minute 12 hours a day. So that being said, middle of summer, obviously, our lighting, we're using less lighting because it, we don't need the lighting till later on in the day because of the daylight time. But when you reverse that into December and January, now we're, we're actually lighting longer than 12 hours a day. So it actually does figure almost a 12 hours a day. So that's how they figure the LED system to work. So getting back to trying to put it into an existing, very mature treat area is a very difficult situation. So and plus, we still look at if, if we don't have to put electric service in a full underground, there's a lot of savings for us. But now if we take, for example, like the, the next year's Ninth Street Project where we're going to, from Oakwood Road out to Golden, out to somewhere, we're going to be, that'll be a powered system just because we already have, we already have an electric system there. we already have an electric system there for some other street lighting. So it just makes sense when we have an electric system there to expand that. So where, where we can and it makes sense, we're, we're trying to really look at, you know, utilizing some of that solar technology. And again, at some point, trees out in the Pickard Estate area will probably get to the point where they are mature enough that it could be, there could be issues, but, uh, again, we're, we're probably talking thirty to forty years for that. And, and, you know, at that time, we'd be well past the replacement cycle anyway.
Yeah, we always have to factor in, you have to factor in the capital costs as well as the operating, uh, practicality. It's not even the operating costs because operating costs are, are very minimal, but it's a capital investment. But, you know, we have, we have, uh, times in the winter where it's fifteen hours of darkness, and if they only last until two in the morning, we, we haven't done ourselves, uh, any service. And then the capital side of it. Um, because once the developer pays for it, the developer's gone. So if we have to replace the cells in ten years, we have to take a look at the capital costs for us because we're now responsible once we accept that lighting into the system. So Scooter's got to evaluate that and, and obviously, uh, he's looking at every little angle that goes with it. So, uh, it, I, I, this is a great discussion because when else do you get to talk about this? So, um, you know, the budget itself is boring, but when you address these issues long-term, you can get savings. Uh, and, you know, a few years ago, uh, the technology wasn't there. Technology's improved a little bit. We're looking at it a little more. Um, but, you know, that, that's what Scooter and his folks do on a regular basis. Do that analysis and say, are we at a point where we can make the jump into this stuff? And, uh, two years from now, same question, different answer. Um, it, it just will be.
Right. And, and again, a lot of it is, and again, like I kind of hit on just a few minutes ago, the, you know, the older, um, HID lighting, which is high intensity discharge lighting, which is traditionally what's been used for, for, um, many, many, many years in, you know, uh, public street lighting in, in our parks. Um, is, is very tried and true, very reliable. So, um, as this, you know, again, it's, it's kind of like when we talk LED, it's kind of like taking a, uh, just, just as a quick example for everyone to see. It's, it's like taking a laptop computer, putting it on top of a thirty-foot pole. And, uh, you know, we know what computers are susceptible to a lot of, a lot of things. So, um, you know, you take a laptop, basically, uh, an LED is an electronic device. You put it out there in a pole and try and make it, uh, perform for quite a few years. So, as that, as that technology, as that LED technology continues to advance, which it seems like it's, it's still going to be going and, uh, and like the caveat again is that the battery technology is, is kind of lagging now behind. So as the battery technology and the LED technology keep moving forward, uh, you know, that, that, that system will become more and more reliable. So, um, like Mark said, it's, it's also our, our point is but the jump in point, where, where do we do it? We, you know, we surely didn't want to do it five years ago when it was, you know, way in its infancy. Let's let the kinks get worked out. And again, like I said, talking to, uh, the engineer that I did contact, you know, it was, it was good that he had a Midwest background because of, of the environments we are going to be putting it in. So, um, that really helps when, uh, we try to, uh, you know, engineer a system. They're already engineering that factor in, him knowing what our, our climate is like. So, again, it's, it, you know, it's, it's like Mark said, it's, it's a balancing act between the budget and when's the right time to get in and is every, you know, is every new development a ca- a good candidate for solar lighting? I, I would say, no, I would say we'd have to, every time we have a new development that comes along, we have to look at it, uh, on that individual development, say, yeah, this one, this one's a good candidate or it's not a good candidate. So.
I guess just a quick little follow-up and then we should probably move on, but, um, and that is, so do you see an opportunity for, um, I guess cross consulting with, um, forestry, city forestry, um, in looking at maybe shorter, uh, height, mature trees that would not obscure. Um, obviously the tree can't be itself, but I'm just curious if that's, uh, you know, something, because I know, um, there have been some discussions about the, you know, obviously the types of trees that we're planting with the street trees. Um, but if that, you know, prevents us from being able to get the maximum solar exposure, uh, just curious if those conversations have started.
Those conversations are always taking place.
Yeah, we, um, we've, yeah, Bill, uh, e- e- even before this Pickard Estate, just to, not to jump ahead of Mark, but, um, you know, I had conversations with Bill, uh, you know, obviously Bill Stern, our forester. And, um, you know, he's able to, you know, move some of those trees around. Obviously, we have to look at our ordinance that requires, I think, two trees or something per terrace that, you know, is, could be an issue. And then the other issue that, um, uh, engineering, uh, we, uh, Jim and I and, um, um, some, uh, Steve Godey and a couple of other people from engineering had, had a meeting, um, as to how would we address a, a private person's tree? You know, someone applies a tree in their front yard that, um, you know, in a few years, now it gets to the point where it's, it, it shadows out the, the solar panel would be an issue. So, yes, we have had discussions with Bill on it. And, uh, he's able to, like I said, he's able to manipulate when he puts trees in, where they would go to, to give us that zone. But, um, it's definitely something we have to look at, not, not only i- in the terms of solar, but in the terms of, uh, even, even a new development, if we put in conventional lighting or LED light, uh, powered light, uh, it's the same, we kind of have the same issue. Obviously, we're trying to space lights as far as we can and still do a, a, a fairly decent job of lighting the street. But when we have trees that are, um, trees that are starting to block that light spread, it, it becomes an issue because, um, you know, we may have a light a hundred or a hundred twenty-five feet from someone's property and they're calling complaining that that there's no light coming from that light because the tree is blocking it all. So, so we do have those issues throughout. And again, i- i- it's not as simple as just saying, oh, we'll go throw another light in there because obviously every light we throw in there costs, you know, if it's a utility owned light, it, it costs us an additional X amount of dollars a month. And if a, 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 a system that we, we, that city own, that we could add a light in, it would add, um, you know, a, a cost onto, um, that monthly charge also.
Adam Mayor, Scooter, Scooter will talk all day if you want. You've got twenty minutes and the, and the two divisions.
Martin's my mute button is what he means.
Yeah, thanks for the detail. Really appreciate that. We'll have another chat.
If you have questions, call me up.
Yeah, the divisions with the biggest ish, policy issues are, are the ones upcoming. So, uh, transit and, uh, parking. So, uh, that's why I'm, I'm just like, I'm looking at the clock and saying, okay, we could, um, some cool stuff, but, uh, tran- I'm not sure which one you want to do next, Jim, but parking and transit are the two big ones.
Yeah, we'll, uh, we'll do transit next, which is page three twenty-nine through three thirty-four, I believe. Um, so a transit for twenty twenty, out of my divisions, is, is been the most challenging for transit, obviously, for a number of different reasons. Um, we started with the, uh, you know, with the computer virus and then we continue on through COVID nineteen. Um, so unfortunately, our reporting requirements and auditing and all that stuff continued on as we've dealt with these issues. Um, so it's, it's been and continues to be a challenging year, not only for those reasons, but, uh, obviously our ridership isn't where we'd like it to be. Um, we do, um, we are fulfilling our mission with the, the transit dependent. Um, there's still a lot of people out there that rely on us to get to work, to get to their medical appointments, to get to shopping, things like that. Um, however, you know, the, we started the revenue agreement with the school district, which I know is near and dear to most of you, and that's, uh, been, uh, it's got off to an okay start, but then school closed again. So obviously we haven't, we have a little bit of student ridership, um, couple thousand rides last month, but, uh, obviously that's, uh, we'd like to get that um, back up to normal whenever this, uh, COVID thing gets a little more under control. Um, same thing with our students at Fox Valley Tech. We have the revenue agreement with them and then, um, we do get some, uh, you know, the Oshkosh ridership as well. Those have both been down as well this year. Um, so, ridership i- i- is down, obviously, um, until we get this pandemic under control. Um, we've done a lot of things related to COVID nineteen, as you're aware of. Um, luckily we had, we still have, and we've had some CARES Act funding, which has helped us with some of those things. We've put in, um, driver barriers. So there's a barrier door between, um, the driver and the passengers as they board and a light. Uh, we've put in, um, the hand sanitizer stations. Um, we've tried to socially distance as much as we can on the vehicles. We're looking at some automatic uh, wheelchair procurement systems, which we haven't quite got to the point of ordering, but we're looking at those as well. Um, some of the other things that, uh, we currently have, um, in the works, uh, as council's aware, you just approved the fuel tank um, replacement bid last, at the last council meeting. So that'll be happening next spring, which will greatly reduce our, A, our biggest risk, which is our deductible for that fuel system. I mean, it's gonna be about a tenth of what it is now, um, as well as our premiums for that liability. Um, so that'll be, um, a project for this next spring. That'll be pretty exciting for us. Um, a couple of other things that, uh, we have going on currently. Um, Steve just finished our public safety, um, transportation safety action plan. And so they have an acronym for it, puts a lot of words, all the transit systems in the country. Uh, had to put one together this year. It's a quite, and it's a big intense document. It's about a hundred pages. Um, it's unfortunate. It's a good plan. Unfortunately, it's one of those instances where we get lumped in with New York and Chicago and every transit city in the country, and they give us all the same guidelines. So we have a a plan that probably would, uh, work for a much larger transit system, but nonetheless, we, we, we had to do that. So we got that done. Steve's, uh, just finishing that up. A new reporting requirement that, uh, that was, every year it seems like we get at least one new reporting requirement. Um, so we've just finished that up. Uh, we're also in the process of working on a, um, we had a grant to do a site selection study pre-COVID. Um, and what that was is we're working with, um, East Central Regional Planning Commission. Um, and then there's also a consultant helping with that. Initially, the plan was to kind of think long-term. You know, what could we do for, uh, a downtown transit center that would be fully functional? Would offer some things like some public amenities, um, as well as opportunity to possibly bypasses. Um, it gives us the opportunity to have, um, some supervisory space down there as well as some driver space. Um, it gives us a chance to do some ADA upgrades, um, and rehab kind of that area. If you've been to La Crosse or Eau Claire, that was originally our vision. They have a pretty nice, um, public-private partnerships going on at both of those locations. Where they have a transit center that's mixed in with some residential, some retail, some parking. Um, so that, that, that's kind of our long-term vision. Um, however, short-term with COVID, um, we've identified some needs for, um, currently all we have down there for our um, operators is a one-stall restroom, one men's, one, one women's and a little mechanical room that they're kind of using as a break room because they don't have the opportunity to come back and forth to anywhere else, um, during their breaks. Um, so with, with, with COVID and to be a little more sanitary and additionally, um, we have a little bit of CARES Act funding. So what we're looking at is now is a short-term plan, which, um, will be brought to you guys probably towards the end of this year. The short-term plan is gonna be, it's gonna add a little bit of, uh, additional space for, um, a driver break area. Um, and then it also gives them an opportunity maybe for access to, to a computer, which it's currently, it's difficult to communicate with our employees and to get things out to them currently because obviously they're on the street all the time. Uh, but it'll also give us opportunity to do some ADA upgrades. There's some pavement issues down there. There's some paper bricks on the platform that aren't in the best shape, that creates some tripping hazards. So we're gonna try to address as much of that as we can in the short term. Um, knowing that we got limited space and funding. We're also limited in the short term to kind of our current footprint. Um, so we don't have a whole lot of room. Um, so we're gonna see what we can get done in the short term. Um, and then also that plan then will give us a long-term plan for if a developer's interested in coming into some type of public-private partnership in the next, um, ten to twenty years and we can partner and get some grant funding, you know, that, that would be the long-term objective. Um, however, we'll be able to do a little bit of short-term work, um, prior to that. Um, as far as the operating budget, I mean, it's pretty much, again, it's, it's status quo. Um, a couple of things I wanted to talk about though, um, well, just high level, just if you notice, and this is something I've pointed out to Russ, is that previous to the two thousand twenty projected, like our, um, our, uh, depreciation and interest weren't necessarily on that line item. So we didn't have an eight, we had, don't have a eight, nine hundred thousand dollar increase from twenty to twenty-one. That's just the depreciation and interest is now being counted in there where it wasn't previously. Um, so if you go, if, you know, if you look at the operating budget overall, it's pretty much status quo. There's nothing that's changed. Um, we're hopeful that this coming year that we can, um, have EAA again, which is a huge event for us. Um, we don't make a ton of money on it, but it's a nice event. It helps our ridership numbers. Um, as well as it, it, it generates a little bit of revenue and it gets, obviously, it's a nice event for our staff as well. It gets everybody kind of excited and energized for, you know, to get ready for that and for that big event. So hopefully we'll have that again this coming year. Um, and a challenge that we have going into twenty twenty-one, um, that this is going to come before you at the next council meeting is, um, for paratransit services, we currently have, um, so we have our fixed route transit system, right, which is the buses. For those of you that aren't as familiar, paratransit then we are required to provide by law, by ADA laws, which is to be equal to or equivalent to the fixed route system. So we are required to provide service for those that are not able to use, uh, the fixed route bus. Um, and that currently is through a contract, two different contracts. One is with um, Running Incorporated for non-ambulatory, so people that are in a wheelchair mobility device. Um, and then we have a separate contract with City Cab for those that are ambulatory, so those that are not in a chair and are able to ride in a cab. Um, so currently we're, we're required to provide that service, the same hours, same area as the fixed route. So that would be six fifteen AM to six forty-five PM, Monday through Saturday. However, the city of Oshkosh offers that service twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. Um, I don't know when that started. It started sometime long time ago. Um, and I think at that time, what happened is we had a, a cab company that was providing the paratransit service and they had twenty-four hour day, seven day a week service and staffing. I think they came to the city at some point and said, we could provide that service for you. We have the vehicles. We have, and the city agreed to do that. So we are the only city in the state that offers twenty-four, seven paratransit service. Why I'm bringing that up now is we just issued a request for a proposal, um, or not just, but a couple of months ago, that was due, um, a few weeks ago for the non-ambulatory paratransit service, which is currently running incorporated. Um, why are ambulatory and non-ambulatory are on two separate contracts? I'm not a hundred percent sure, but again, at some point in the past, that was, those contracts were separated. Um, so that five-year contract with Running's coming to an end at the end of this year. We issued a request for a proposal, sent it to everybody that we know that's in that business. We only received one response back, um, and that was from Running Incorporated with a significantly higher rate than we currently have. Um, so I talked with them about, well, why is that? Is this service that you're not interested in anymore? I mean, it's almost seems like maybe that's the case. They indicated to me, no, they are still interested in it. However, because they have to provide twenty-four, seven service, especially during the third shift from ten PM to six AM, they have to have a vehicle and driver available. Well, they get paid per ride. Um, I don't have the number in front of me, but there was like, they provided, I think it was like twenty-seven rides over a year between the, over that third shift period. So obviously, you know, at, uh, I think it's like twenty-nine dollars, twenty-seven, twenty-nine dollars per ride. Um, you know, they had to staff eight hours a day when they only got paid, you know, it was about nine hundred dollars for the year. So they said that because they have to provide that twenty-four hour, seven day a week service and have vehicles and drivers available, um, that in addition to our ridership has decreased, actually pre-COVID, um, our paratransit ridership had went down quite a bit. Um, five years ago, it was about twenty-five thousand rides on the service. It's, this, uh, two thousand nineteen was like fifteen. Why that is, we don't know exactly. We can kind of hypothesize that it's probably a couple of things. Our demographics may have changed a little bit. And additionally, there's more options available, I believe. Um, through some of the social service agencies that have vehicles and/or through some of the social service agencies that have vehicles and/or, you know, the third-party Ubers, Lifts, things like that. So what that brings me to is Running basically said they're, they're losing money on the service. They can't get economies of scale because they only have the non-ambulatory service. So their suggestions were, hey, you know, if we could get that ambulatory service, which I said you can't right now because that contract's not up until next year and we'd have to bid it out. But that would allow them to get some more economies of scale if, if they had, you know, these service hours, they could then utilize their vehicles and drivers better. So they've said the last few years, they've lost money on the contract. They've wanted to honor the contract, so they haven't brought this up before. In hindsight, they said they probably should have came to us and said, hey, you know, this contract doesn't work and what can we do to work together? But I give them credit, they honor the contract. It was just a surprise to us that they need that big of an increase. So, long story short, negotiating with them, since we only had the one contractor interested. I did talk to a couple of the other contractors and they indicated similarly that there just wasn't enough business for them to be interested in that contract. So I asked Running, what can you do for a one-year extension? That would get us through next year. Then at the end of twenty twenty-one, our plan is to bid the ambulatory, non-ambulatory paratransit together. So then we have one contract, there'll be more service available for those contractors. So then they can get some economies of scale. Their first proposal was, well, why don't you eliminate the ten PM to six AM? And we can give you a little bit less rate. It wasn't as much as I had hoped for. However, the concern I have with that is I said, well, the issue with that right now is because then if you were ambulatory, you could get that service. If you're non-ambulatory, you couldn't for a year. So that's an equity issue. So I said, okay, well, what would it be for a one-year extension, same service, knowing that next year we'll bid them together? And then also next year, it'll give us a year to evaluate, do we want to? And do we need to offer twenty-four seven service for the limited usage? And we can study those numbers a little bit closer. So that's kind of where we're at. So on the next council agenda, there's a, an item to approve a one-year extension with Running. The rate is higher. It's thirty-five dollars a ride versus where we're currently around twenty-nine forty, I believe it is. What, excuse me, was it?
Twenty-three, twenty-five.
Twenty-three, twenty-five? Okay, so we're gonna have a decent-sized increase for next year. However, I've already talked to the county and the county helps fund that program. They're gonna chip in some extra money for it. All the details will be on that item on the council agenda. But then additionally with the federal and state funding, so the city share of it won't be that much. And with our fuel being relatively low, and generally we budget that conservatively, budget-wise will be okay. But I'm just setting that up for, I think in the next year, we really need to consider if we need to continue being the only system in the state that offers that twenty-four seven service, knowing that we can barely get contractors interested in the contract because of that. I know the last RFP prior to this one, I also talked to some contractors that did not provide proposals. And they indicated that that was a big detriment to them. Because you almost have to be local to, and have an office here to offer that service, which can be a good thing. You know, Running and City Cab both have offices here, which is good for us. But the downside to that is we obviously gotta pay a higher rate than for that.
A question, and maybe we can talk about this more when it comes up at the council agenda. But I guess this relates to policy in that some folks who have used Running Inc. have been frustrated. And my, my mother, who's since passed away, was one of them and several others. Frustrated at Running Inc.'s, I guess, hierarchy in terms of their on-demand and scheduled visits that, in some instances, folks were told that depending upon whether or not it was a medical or a court appointment that they were traveling to, that there was some kind of prioritization there. Can you speak to how that is addressed in that equality or equal to transit requirement under ADA? Or our, our FPs or contracts in the past, how is that their decision to decide whether or not somebody gets a ride based on where they're going to? It, it doesn't seem equal to me.
Yeah, I can explain that. There is, so basically, there is some hierarchy there. They, they're not allowed to prioritize trips. However, under ADA, we are required to service. Again, we're only required to provide trips that are scheduled. So under ADA, the rider is supposed to schedule their trip a day in advance. So under ADA, they're required to, they should be scheduling their trip by the end of our service today. So if you would need a ride tomorrow, you can do two things. You can either schedule the trip. So you didn't need to call during business hours today for your trip tomorrow, and they would schedule that. Or you can provide what they call a subscription. So if you need a ride every Wednesday at eight o'clock, you could call Running and say, I need a ride every Wednesday at eight o'clock, and they would set that up for you. So by ADA, that's what's required. You're required to call a day in advance and/or set up subscriptions. And that's how that service is monitored. That's how the FTA monitors our on-time performance. However, again, in Oshkosh, we went over and above that. We do allow same-day trips. We're not required to. Most systems do not do that. We're one of the only ones in the state that allow same-day trips. So how that works is if the contractor is able, so we tell them, if you are able to provide same-day trips, then please do so. However, you need to prioritize your scheduled and subscription trips because those are the ones that the service is monitored on. So if somebody scheduled a ride for eight o'clock today, for instance, and somebody else. So if you call at seven o'clock today and said, I need a ride at eight o'clock, but somebody had scheduled a ride at eight o'clock today, but they called yesterday to schedule that and/or they had a subscription trip, those rides need to get serviced first. So the subscription and scheduled by law have to take priority over same-day rides. Because we're not required to provide same-day rides. And that's also the, how the service is monitored. So we have a service window. So if you scheduled or you had a subscription trip for eight o'clock, we're required to, the service is monitored by a thirty-minute window. So it's fifteen minutes before eight o'clock to fifteen minutes after eight o'clock. So they have a half-hour window to get there to pick you up. So what happens often is with those same-day rides, people get frustrated because they're like, well, I had to wait a half hour or I had to wait an hour. And that's just, that's just the way the service works. Because again, we have to service the scheduled and subscription first. Now, the scheduled and subscription trips by ADA were, are not allowed to be prioritized. So if you scheduled a trip for eight o'clock today and you're going to the doctor, somebody else scheduled one at eight o'clock and they're going to the grocery store, they cannot say, okay, because you're going to the doctor, you get priority over the person going to the grocery store. That's not allowed. So I know that Steve has, and prior to him, Dave, we went over this a number of times with, with Running. So if something like that does happen, definitely let us know because we do need to address that. But often what happens is people get confused because they're scheduling same-day trips and they don't understand that the scheduled or subscription trips have to take priority.
Well, and we can talk offline about, you know, several instances where, you know, I personally was involved with scheduling multiple elderly folks, even aside from my mother, with trying to get some of those subscription things set up and and that whole prioritization. Now, it has been a year since that occurred, but in any event, we can have that conversation offline.
Sure.
True.
Yeah, if you, anything like that, let's, Steve manages that contract, but either Steve or I let us know and we'll definitely address it.
I've had some quickly, we had, we had some circumstances with them, kind of regarding what they feel they should prioritize and not prioritize. And we've made that very clear this year. So any issues can be directed to me and that'll get squared away very quickly.
All right, good to know. Thank you.
And so with that, you know, like I said, that'll be at the next council meeting. And I think it'll be good to evaluate that service over the next year and see where we want to go there. You know, the benefit for us is we'll continue to service as is. And then potentially get a better proposal next year. Obviously, the downside for Running is that, like I told them, I said, you know, you're either gonna get, at that point, either get it all or none, and they understand that, so.
All right, Jim, it looks like Councilmember Paschal had a question too.
Sure, I, it's not related to the paratransit. It's more related to the, to the budget, so. And part of it is that I'm just wondering, you indicated that we renewed a contract with Fox Valley Tech, I believe? Yep, a revenue agreement. Where does that fall within the revenue? What line item?
That would be under, let me look here.
Is that Fairbox Other?
I believe that is under Looks like that was twenty I'd, I'd have to look at the immunis system to tell you for sure, but I believe it's under, I believe that's the it's either the passenger fares, the thirty thousand, or the Fairbox other. I don't remember off the top of my head which one it is, but it's one of those two lines.
Okay. But Jim, it's roughly about thirty thousand?
Yeah, it's a little, if I remember correctly, yeah, it was between twenty and thirty. It was a little bit less than that.
And there's a different formula for Fox Valley Tech. There's a floor that they pay, and then there's a ceiling if they get a very busy year. Obviously, this year, they'll be paying the floor because they're not going to have that much usage in the past. They've done some good things and they've had good ridership and they've paid the max, but there is a minimum and a maximum under the contract, similar to the way it was with, with UWO when they were part of it.
Right. Yeah, so I'll send you an email with exactly what that is, but once I look in the system.
Right now, Jim. Hold on a second.
Was that Russ?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
So I have a, I have a couple more questions. I can give you some time to look for that, Russ.
Hey Bob, can you, is your mic movable that it can be closer? It's, you're just real faint.
Okay.
Believe the revenue for Fox Valley be twenty-eight, nine, nine, two.
Okay, thank you. So a couple more line items in the revenue, forty-nine, twenty-six and forty-nine, seventy-two. Forty-nine, twenty-six, I'm just wondering what the rent of land is. And I'm wondering why the miscellaneous revenue in twenty twenty doesn't show up in twenty twenty-one.
Sure. While the rental land, that's easy. That's basically, we have a, well, we allow access, it's basically like an easement for the building that's in front of our office, which is by where Edison Jones is. So they pay two thousand dollars a year, basically, just so they can have access. If they didn't have access to that driveway, they'd be pretty much have no access because they don't have a driveway on Whitsel. So they pay two thousand dollars a year just basically for that access. So that, that's been that way as long as I can remember. I know there was an issue a few years when I first started with them not paying it, but that hasn't been an issue recently. And then the forty-nine, seventy-two, I gotta, I have to look at immunis and refresh my memory. I believe that may have reflected when we had the basically all it is, is it moved to a different line, but I gotta remember exactly how that moved. I believe it was
Those payments received on accidents from insurance companies?
Yeah, there you go. But, so basically that, and there was a little bit gosh, this was a few, close to when I started a few years ago, we switched insurance carriers. So we got a little bit of a refund a couple of years ago. And then as their reserves ran out, they were giving us some of that money back. So I believe that got put in there as well, but yeah.
Our old insurance company.
Right.
Mutual insurance company that we got out of.
But mostly miscellaneous revenue for the most part, though, I think, I don't know if he said that to Russ or whoever said that. But anyway, it was, that's generally like payments where the bus is in an accident, and then we get refunded by their insurance company. So obviously, we're not budgeting for that.
Thank you.
The other thing is the Fox Valley Tech contracts under four, seven, seven, four passenger fares.
Yeah, that makes sense. So like Steve said, it's about twenty-nine thousand, so that's budgeted at thirty, so that, that makes sense.
Jim, a question about advertising on the buses. Where does that get reflected in the, in the revenue?
Forty-nine, forty-four, the advertising revenue.
So, yeah, that's what I was thinking. So is that is, is there any way that we're looking at an increase in, in that area? I know some folks have asked about advertising revenue on the shelters, the, the bus shelters, but would this include both?
So how that works is we currently have a contract with, we issue a request for proposal about every five years for that. So it's currently with Halk Advertising. Basically does the majority of the transit systems in the state. But they do all the work, they do all the marketing, they do all the sales, basically, and then we get fifty percent of that revenue. But they do basically everything. They install it, they take care of everything. However, fortunately, they haven't asked for a reduction in, or in what they pay us, because this year, obviously, with transit service being ridership being lower, they're getting the benefit from those buses running around. I know that some systems cut service for a while and that they had, they had talked to them about actually redoing their contract because they're, they didn't want to pay as much for those vehicles not being running. So fortunately, we've been able to remain, keep that steady. So I don't see it increasing as far as on the buses. However, to get to your question about shelters, that's something we've looked at. We currently have, though, city ordinances that prohibit off-street advertising. So if we were gonna do that, we would have to look at changing our ordinances and then that would also, we'd have, we'd have to look at how we would do that because then potentially other businesses could say, well, you're allowing Go Transit to do off-street advertise, why can't we do off-street advertise or off-premise advertising? And we've decided not to open that can in the past.
It's an offshoot of the Gilbert case that we don't want to get ourselves. It, it's not a transit issue, it's everybody else's issue.
Sure, I guess, you know, it, it does seem that other cities are maximizing that. So at some point, I guess, maybe we can have that conversation again.
Sure, yeah, some do, some don't. It varies, but yeah, I've talked with Lynn about that over the years and we so far haven't opened that can.
All right, thanks.
So if we're done with transit, I just have one more budget to go over quick. I know we're a little bit over. So the last one is the parking utility, which is page three twenty-six through three twenty-eight. Again, this, this one is budgeted at status quo, the just real high level. Generally, how this, how we do the parking utility is the parking lot reconstruction projects are generally budgeted, as you know, through the five hundred thousand a year in the CIP budgets. This year, we just finished reconstructing the Tenth Avenue parking lot. They just have to stripe it. It looks really nice. Hundred times better than what was there, so that'll, should be opening shortly. We currently have them doing the engineering study on the Red Arrow parking lot, which isn't part of the parking utility, but that's a parking lot nonetheless. This next year, we're looking at reconstructing the parking lot on Ninth and Oregon on the west side. This next year, we're looking at reconstructing the parking lot on Ninth and Oregon, on the west side of Oregon, just south of Ninth. It's in really rough shape. I'm going to be interested in how we do that project, because it is not level at all, so there's going to be some leveling required there. So anyway, that's, those are the projects, so those, my point being, though, those capital projects generally aren't. Funded or budgeted in the operating budget. The operating budget, basically, what it is, is revenue from tickets, things like that. As well as permits. And then we do have, the county does lease some spaces in the Convention Center North and Otter Street lots. And then we just have one person in City Hall that is in the. Basically deals with the tickets and things like that for the parking utility. Historically, the big issue with the parking utility is that we have free parking downtown. So some of you may remember about, gosh, time flies, but it's probably four or five years ago, we looked, had Walker Parking Consultants do a study. The study concluded we had sufficient parking downtown. They recommended doing some paid-on-street parking on Main Street and one block over, however, at that time, council and. We thought we had some agreement with the bid to do that, but then there was some pushback, and we decided to. Continue with the free parking downtown, how it currently is, and continue funding the parking lot improvements through the capital budget. Now, this year, Mark, I don't know if you want to add a little bit or not about the bid conversations, or how much you want to get into that?
Well, we'll eventually come to council anyway, so. The bid has traditionally been providing us about fifteen thousand dollars a year. It dates back to the debt that they incurred, that the city had picked up for the parking lots. It continued after that debt obligation was paid off, because the city. Paid fully for the reconstruction of the four-hundred East Block back in twenty-ten. And the bid wants to focus their resources on marketing and promotion and not parking. They've asked to be relieved of that fifteen thousand obligation, they made a request that frankly was not. Feasible, and I've let Mr. Larson know, he's the president of the bid board. I let him know that that wasn't going to be possible, I'm not, the bid still has to meet. About that issue regarding their budget, the council is, by law, the council approved their budget, it can't modify it. It can basically say thumbs up or thumbs down. And it's not a lot of money, but the bid. Businesses, you know, get a significant benefit from the downtown parking. I know they want to revisit other issues regarding paid parking on streets in the, in the bid area and things like that. But, you know, the parking utility really isn't much of a utility anymore, and it's been that way. Since even before I got here, we knew it wasn't a financially viable utility, it gets subsidized. Heavily. And the bid's contribution is really just a very small amount. But it's a vital portion of it, because every little bit helps, and if we don't get that. Contribution from the bid, the taxpayers are going to be doing that, so it's going to be a policy issue. I'm happy to talk to the bid board about it, but. The option that they came up with was to have us. Remove snow from the downtown area sidewalks, and that's just cost prohibitive, we can't do that.
Mark or Russ, how much do we spend for the Convention Center parking ramp? Or somebody, can somebody put me to that page?
The Convention Center parking ramp, we discussed a little bit yesterday. Yeah, that's the three dollar a night charge that is used, you know, technically. We, we lease the garage from the hotel, it's a long, complicated issue that. Dates actually back to the nineteen-seventies, but for maintenance purposes, we agreed to. Do the maintenance, and in exchange, the hotel collects three dollars a night, it's referred to us. And we do the improvement, it's not a transportation issue, it's more of a. Facilities management does that, although I think. Who, Jim, do you remember who clears the snow there? It's a combination of things, but we still clear the snow, because it's technically. A municipal parking garage, but we've got funding for it, that's in actually pretty good shape. And you only asked me about the garage, and that's, that one is in good shape, other ones are a challenge.
The, the cost for the garage is on page three-twenty-five. It's a fund five-oh-six Convention Center parking ramp, and we've talked about that yesterday.
Yeah, and you know, we've got a fund balance of over three-hundred fifty thousand dollars there, so we, we are actually in very good shape. With that fund, and that's only been in existence for about eight years, so we've got a good little war chest for things that come up. And staff is, works very closely with the hotel. What we're talking about here with the parking utility are the parking lots in the downtown area. That primarily benefit downtown businesses and their, and their patrons.
So, so did you say that the three dollars a night that guests pay there gets sent back to us? And that's where this kind of fund comes from?
Yeah, correct.
Then, I guess, the question then is, is the bid asking again for us to make the investment? The capital investment for the meters to put. Back in so that that can be a similar, I guess, funded. Parking, I guess I'm not clear on what they're asking this time round, besides.
That's not a formal request at this time, but they, they have certainly continued to have discussions about that. Being an option, but I suggested to them that the bid leadership and the bid membership. Are a bit divided on that issue, because the bid board was very. Strong in their recommendation, and we brought forth that recommendation and from the bid board. And the businesses' members of the bid contacted council members, and I mean, perhaps. Councilmember Allison Osby can have some memories of that, but I think you were heavily. Lobbied by bid membership, so that kind of went by the wayside because of that. And I suggested that if that was going to happen again, that they need to get their membership in alignment with their. Their leadership, so that they don't put, you know, because staff was advocating for it, and council was being told. Absolutely opposite of what staff was being told, and it wasn't a council staff issue, it was a bid board and bid membership issue that there was misalignment. Deb, would you kind of agree with that?
Yes, I would.
Nothing more, huh? And Jim, Jim still has battle scars from it, because Jim was carrying this, and you know, financially. It made, it was feasible, that they could pay for themselves with everything that we had analyzed. But the members did not like that concept of people paying. Quite honestly, I think the technology's improved even better than it was, what, four or five years ago, Jim? Fifteen or sixteen, so the technology's really improved, and if you've gone to other urban areas, it's gotten. It's not just for big cities anymore. The university uses it to a certain degree, but smaller cities are starting to. Look at this.
And quite honestly, we've added the same self-pay stations at the parks for boat launches and that too.
That's a great case in point, that's a, that's a great example, because five years ago, that would have been a horrible idea. Now, Ray will tell you, and you can ask him later today, that's worked out very well, and the receptivity is very good. But they were always paying for that, so that didn't change the status quo.
Right.
This is changing the status quo, and I, I know Deb can tell you, they got, the council was getting clobbered. With input, and they were just like, Mark, this doesn't match up with what we're hearing, and so. If the bid's going to propose that, which they haven't formally, my advice to them is you got to get your members in alignment. Before we entertain something like that, right now, all we're talking about is what's on page three-twenty-eight, the fifteen grand a year. And, and I'll continue the conversations with the bid board, but. The solution that they proposed just isn't going to work. From our standpoint. So, that, that was really the issue, otherwise, you know, we're, we're still, you know, managing, but it's. But, long-term, we have issues that we still need to address. And that's all that we have with that one, and Mr. Larson has been patiently waiting. There's nothing else, I would suggest we get to the. Museum, if that's okay, Madam Mayor?
It looks like we're ready.
Brad was hiding his Anna C, so don't worry. Brad had some technical difficulty, so Anna bailed him out, so yeah, just frame yourself up a little better, Brad, and you'll be good. There you go. Brad, if you could just refer to pages as you go through this, that would be appreciated.
I will, I have to say that despite the cyber attack and, and the pandemic, we, we actually have had a pretty good year. We've been very forward-looking, very positive, and I've gotten a lot of things done. We're going to go through three budgets, and the first one we start with is the membership budget, and that's on page one-fifty-nine. And I actually think that's a really good budget to start with, because the membership budget is the main way we fund a lot of our projects. So exhibitions and publications and LTE staff, and also one full-time staff are all funded through the membership. And in many ways, the membership is the bellwether of the health of the museum. And that's why it's one of our KPIs, because when the membership program is strong, the museum is strong. And we currently have about six hundred members, which is very good. And it's not just a member annual renewals that are in that, it's membership. Donations, so the members are very generous and are committed to the museum. So that is the way that we fund a lot of our projects, every year, you'll see things through the membership program. So there's the big change in the membership program for this year, or for twenty-twenty-one, is related to Titanic. So we fund the rental through that, we fund additional marketing through, through membership. And those are all reflected, those will all be reflected in the operating budget, which I'll get to in a minute. So typically, what happens is we transfer funds from the membership fund into the operating fund. To support those operating expenses, works out very well. We also, I should also point out that the membership fund is under the direction of the museum board. So all the expenses that you would see annually in the budget have all been run through the board, and they all are approved. And then, of course, sometimes those will go through the council periodically when it's a large expense. So, this year, just for, to give you a really good example of the membership fund, this year. We purchased a new software program called Schedules Plus, that's for our members, our donors. And our volunteers, it's a very cost-effective system, it's very efficient. And it's tied in many ways to our KPIs, because it'll give us much better numbers and percents. And, and that's something that we, we know we really have to focus on. The membership program also purchased through a donor, a point-of-sale system for the museum store. So that's also tied to a KPI, a point-of-sale is just like light-years ahead of the old cash register system that we're using. So in summary, the membership fund is strong, it is supporting primarily LTE positions. One full-time position and exhibition costs, particularly this coming year. The, the Titanic. Which is, which will open in July, and then we have some other major events, like the Menominee Clan Powwow, which will be in mid-June. And let me think, I think that's the, that's the main big ones for the membership. Any questions on that budget? Well, then we'll move to the two-four-one budget, which is the operating, and that starts on page one-seventy-two. So the big impact on the membership, I mean, excuse me, on the operating budget has been our attendance, which is minimal. And, and it's not even close to reduced capacity, so we have some attendance, but it's really not high, high at all. And of course, as fears of COVID diminish over the coming year, we assume that we will see a return to more normal numbers in, in twenty-twenty-one. But even so, even assuming that we're going to get back to more normal numbers, for our budget projections for next year. We have been conservative with, with all our exhibits, and with the return of the enrichment programs, we've been very conservative. And not overestimating the number of people that are going to come in. So if I pick just on Titanic, which is a really good one to use. We are projecting about half of the attendance that we had projected for the twenty-twenty budget. Just because we know that those, there's going to be those lingering concerns. And speaking of Titanic, the, a lot of the costs that were associated that with Titanic. Are actually reflected in this year's budget, they were reimbursable expenses. But we're assuming then this year, it just means we don't have to do them next year. So that would be gallery preparation, for one thing, galleries were refurbished over the winter months. And half of the rental payment for Titanic came out of twenty-twenty-one, or twenty-twenty. And then the second half will come out of twenty-twenty-one. So, the budget reflects all those expenses, but it doesn't reflect the offsetting revenue. That'll be turned around in twenty-twenty-one, even with the reduced attendance. The biggest budget impact for twenty-twenty-one that you will see is we have some retirement payouts which are in there. And that's really what's driving some of the increases that you'll see in, in that budget. Those are the highlights of that budget, and if you have any, any questions or comments, or. We'll talk about the operating. Well, seeing none, I'll go to my last one, which is the collections fund. And that starts on page one-seventy-eight. The collections fund budget is the way we fund either acquisitions. When there's a major acquisition, you may recall, a couple of years ago, we acquired a very big collection of Civil War letters. But we also fund the treatment of artifacts, the conservation treatment of artifacts. And the budget that you see is really focused on the treatment of artifacts, and they're focused on two exhibits. One is Sporting and Recreation. And the other is Deeper It's Growing City. Sporting and Recreation has been delayed because of COVID for a number of reasons. And also, the treatment of those artifacts have been delayed. Because of COVID, so. That fund, while not really large, the interest is minimal, while not really large, it's really important. For ensuring the, the health of the exhibitions, so it's really focused on collections. Conservation and treatment and some acquisitions, and what you see in that budget is really related to our two upcoming long-term exhibits. Any questions on that? Well, then I'm just going to touch for a minute on capital projects. If you've gone by the museum, you saw that, the museum was torn up for about a month, and that was our foundation project. I'm, I have to commend the Department of Public Works, because they did all the excavating and a good. Lion share of that work, and the City Electrical Division, which moved all the services above grade, so they're not piercing the. And the City Electrical Division, which moved all the services above grade, so they're not piercing the foundation. This is a wonderful project. It's been a long time coming. But I have to tell you, for the for the long term structural integrity of the museum, that foundation project absolutely had to happen. So while it was a mess. It is a tremendous improvement. We're really happy with it. So that's one's almost done. We still have landscaping to do, which we're we'll bid over the cold months, and then that work will be done in in spring. That was our big capital project. And a lot of the other ones that you know about the chimney repair, for example. Is one rebuilding of the of the carriage house. Kupola was another one. And then I've mentioned our exhibition projects are largely delayed for a year or even more. And we're working with the firm Split Rock Studios, and so we have their schedule to work with as well. But I just did. I did want to mention the capital projects simply because I really have to commend Public Works and Electrical Division. They really were fantastic. Yes, Deb.
I went to go hit my unmute my button. My whole thing flipped. Sorry about that. So I was just going to say. If it's possible, would you mind, Brad, sending me shooting me an email? Because I'd like to talk to you offline. You know, a couple of things. I don't want to take up, you know, budget time, but just a couple of ideas and a couple of questions. That would be great if you could send me a note and let me know what your schedule looks like this week. But the other thing I was going to say, too, because I know, you know, there were some questions regarding some of the work that was being done. And I think that was before election, because I think there was confusion about what needed to be done on the foundational work and what was what was kind of thought to be landscaping. You know, but the landscaping was kind of part of the the whole. Foundation. But what I was going to say is, if there was going to be a time for the museum to kind of be in a hot mess like that, two thousand and twenty is a fitting year for it. So the good news is we can just get it out of the way with this year and then bring on two thousand and twenty one.
Absolutely. Everything worked out perfectly in that regard, anyway. And I'll I'll send you an email later today.
Brad, I just had a question regarding the I know back when we were in capital. Budget discussions, there was some reference to the flexible space that was intended. To be built, if I recall. One of the areas of the museum that that I want to say the term was flexible space. But in any event, the question that I have is, are there spaces in the museum that are, I guess. Long term leasable that that are maybe underutilized at this point? Or is that would that kind of be? The thought that the flexible space was going to offer another venue for revenue?
You're right. It was called flexible space. That's still in the plan. And the creation of the flexible space depends on the removal of one big exhibit called Memories and Dreams and replacing it with Deeper It's Growing City. The design development for Deeper It's Growing City. Should start in the winter if the CIP is approved, but it's a big project, so. It'll take multiple years to finish that. So it will take several years before that flexible space is created. In other spaces, we do not have a single square foot that is not utilized here. So to answer that question, we have no space that could be used. And our single lecture room right now. Is actually being used to hold. Material that we need for Titanic. It was all refurbished, so it's now being used as a temporary storeroom. Did that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Yes, Matt.
Unmute Matt.
Sorry, I thought I hit my button. Good morning. I have I have a question, then I got a follow up after you give me the answer. Would you mind reminding council? What the museum is doing in terms of trying to meet their mission still? Obviously, we've got a a wonderful pandemic. That's that's. Creating lots of challenges for for anybody in the service industry. But just remind us all what you're doing right now at the museum to try to still meet your mission in terms of of. Allowing people to see these unique exhibits and opening the doors.
So we are open, but like I said earlier, we have minimal attendance. But we have actually started cemetery tours for the fall. Those are those are actually full. Most of those are full, even with the reduced capacity and all the COVID restrictions. Those are going very well. We have our collections online, so those are being utilized. But also, I have to say, our curators are very busy. Answering citizen inquiries. I think part of it is everyone is home, and they're wondering, hey, I wonder if if the museum would be interested in this, or I have a question about that. I'm doing my genealogy. We don't have an archivist right now, so the collection staff is actually handling the archival questions as well. So we have seen a tremendous increase in the number of. Requests and inquiries from citizens. Most of them come by email, but some by phone.
I appreciate that a lot. Especially just the the focus and the emphasis on still trying to meet the mission as much as possible, being as flexible as possible. I know, you know. I was conveying similar questions to the library, obviously, yesterday. I appreciate that you guys are are doing everything you can to still. Keep the doors open as safely as possible to allow people who are comfortable to come into your doors and. And do the things that they'd like to and want to and and need to for some, you know. Sometimes it's for professional purposes. They need to come in and and do research and things like that. So I just wanted to say thank you for. You know, being that valuable asset and keeping doors open as much as possible for the people of Oshkosh and the surrounding the surrounding area. What I think most of council may not know is prior to COVID, for example. If you'd like to share what your number one school group to visit your museum is, and it might surprise people that it doesn't start with the word Oshkosh.
No, it does not. Actually, it's the Nina School District. That is our our number one. And we we have schools that visit from as far away as Beaver Dam and Shawno. Fond du Lac is a good user.
So I appreciate that. I'm glad that we're a resource for for most school districts around us. I wish it'd be a resource for our own school district here in town. And maybe in the future, the the higher ups can see to that 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 being a. A push within the school district, but I appreciate it very much, sir.
Just another follow up question then, Brad. Right now, then, what are the? Capacity limits, if you will, in relation or are there? Limits on the building as as the current order states. So in other words, how many people can be in the building right now?
We work with the fire department on that, and we set it at forty. At any one time, but I I have to tell you, we're not anywhere near that. The most we have at any one time is probably about a dozen to fifteen. Now, if we would start to get up around the forty number, which I think would be wonderful if that happened, we would go back to the fire department, and we would work with the chief and say, okay, let's just take a look at this again. Make sure that we're on on the safe side of that. And we work closely with the fire department to establish that number, but it's forty.
I know the Parks Parks Department has been really creative in the Truck or Treat event. Have there been any requests? From the public or the board discussions about, you know. Night at the museum, small group, and I'm not saying you should or shouldn't, just asking if that's. If there are other things that are being creatively discussed for the current attendance challenge.
We actually did talk about that, but whenever we do an event, it's heavily dependent on volunteers, so not necessarily just staff. So we try to minimally staff it. And then our volunteers do the majority of the of the actual work. And right now, we have a minimal volunteer. A minimal number of volunteers who have returned. I want to say we probably have maybe three, three to five volunteers actively returned. And when you consider that a good portion of our volunteers are older, I don't believe that they're going to feel compelled to return until we have a a more safer atmosphere. And so for that reason, that also impacts the programs. We did try virtual programs. We did not have a good response to that at all. So we are not going to pursue the virtual. Yes.
How many volunteers do you typically have?
If you looked at all of our volunteers who may work one day or they may work every week, we have about seventy five. If you looked at the number who are really active and committed and will come on a regular basis, we're probably up around fifteen to eighteen. With the number of those that are weekly visitors who come, excuse me, volunteers, who either come once a week or multiple times a week. So our real core would probably be around fifteen.
So Brad, I was kind of curious with the virtual thing. Why do you think? Like, do you think it's just that it was more about awareness? Because I can't imagine that more people didn't. Aren't taking advantage of it.
Now, here's here's I'll I'll tell you what I think it is. We never surveyed the people. We don't really know why. But coming to the museum is an experience. When you come to the museum for a program, you're surrounded by history. You're there for the program, but you also have the direct. Access to staff. It is as much about being in the. Museum itself, being in the museum proper, listening to the program, having the ambiance, being able to talk to staff and any follow up. So it's not simply just getting the information that's imparted to you over the screen and, okay, I'm done. So. I think that that's I think that that's it. And a a good portion of the people that come to the programs are older. Not all of them by any means, but a good portion are, and. They are not as comfortable with the technology as, say, someone in a younger demographic. So when you combine the experience of the museum and then having to use the technology, it's just not the same. It's just like, why bother?
So I agree with you. I think you're right on both accounts. But I also hear a craving from the community to have connection. And although not everybody's quick to be, you know, to jump on Zoom or, you know, there's a different kind of meeting things. I also hear in the community that they very much would like to still be able to participate at some level, even, you know, like with the museum. So I think it's a combination of both. I think you're absolutely right in both of those spaces. But I also think there's a need that's out there and a want that's out there, but also a lack of awareness. So I hate to throw something out prematurely. And the only and the reason why I say that, too, is, you know, we don't know how long we're in this environment, and I'd hate to give up too soon if it really could be something because I'm more. And that's part of what I want to talk to you is in this in the space of like, you know, what we're doing, is there a way to maybe help out with those that are trying to, you know, teach from home or the school district or a number number of things like that? But I can tell you, there's not a lot of people that are aware that the museum is even offering anything virtually. So that's where I think I might I might be a little bit right, too.
Well. I like hearing those kind of ideas and comments and discussion. We are considering doing a virtual tour of People of the Waters. And that way, it can be used as a teaching tool for whether you're at home or in the classroom, actually. So that is the top item on our list right now. Of course, when we do a tour People of the Waters with students, we have all these hands on activities which would be lacking in the virtual. But when you and I talk, we'll explore that topic a little bit more.
So if there are no other questions for Brad, we're at a quarter to ten. Ahead of schedule. And city manager is. Would we be looking at perhaps an earlier break or bringing in somebody else on standby?
I see that Assistant Chief Zimer is logged on. I don't see Chief Stanley. One of the suggest if if they can perhaps be ready. By by ten o'clock, we could probably start them early. And then what I would suggest is because we moved the clerk up yesterday. That we move. City manager, which includes the council's budget, by the way, we move that up to after fire. Alt it so or alternatively, we could I I just think that's a better way to do it. I don't know if Mr. Zimer is monitoring it. Oh, his his microphones.
So are you wait, are you suggesting that we take another hour before we break?
No, I'm suggesting we break now and see if the fire department can start at ten.
Okay, okay.
By Chief Zimer. And then at the end of fire, then I would suggest that we just put the city manager's budget in there. Then that will, you know, then we take our lunch break. Noon or a little after, and then we're done by before four. And I know at least one council member indicates they may have to go out. And Chief Stanley just texted me saying he is ready. So what I would suggest is we go for the break now. Take a fifteen minute break. We'll start promptly at.
Ten oh five.
Ten oh five. That sounds great. All right. We will. We'll see everybody at ten oh five. Hey, Russ, can you hear me?
I can hear you. You can't hear me when I'm muted.
No, okay, cool. I see it. I texted you a question because as they were talking about museum. Is the. Museum expansion. The entrance expansion, the Stiger Wing, is that in the CIP? I was paging through it, and I couldn't find it, and I didn't bring the five year CIP document home with me. I just couldn't remember where it was. Or is it not in there because it's not funded?
If you go to the back of your book on page four oh two.
Yeah.
There's a list by department for the museum.
Yeah, I don't see it there. That's why I'm asking.
I don't. I don't think it's in.
Yeah, okay, that that was really that was. I was like, okay, is it is it hiding somewhere else? Because I see the training center, fire training center in two thousand and twenty three. Pushed back like we talked about. So that's part of the CIP is that. We don't have that. I think, you know, I referenced it in the budget message, and then I started to second guess myself. So, okay. So you're pretty confident it's not there either.
Yeah, because that's why we did the summary of funding, and then we did the summary by department, so you could look at an eyeball and glance at departments.
Like glance at the right place. It's 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 not there, and that's why. Let's see. Yeah, because. Oh, yeah, because if you look at page six of my budget message. The the incomplete bullet that carried over from the prior page. Meanwhile, a number of other projects for other quality of life assets, including museum stagger wing expansion, Riverwalk expansion. And future phases of Lake Shore Park will remain difficult to fund as council balances these projects against its debt management goal. So I I. I just don't want it to fall. Well, it's in the it's in the plan. It's just not in the budget.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. You confirmed what I thought. I just.
Double check.
I just wanted to make sure I wasn't reading it incorrectly. All right. Sorry to take up your break time, so I'll talk to you guys in a few.
Are we all back?
Present.
I can't see everyone's listening, but I do see that.
I scrolled over. We have everybody on council, Madam Mayor, and we have also Chief Stanley. So we're ready to roll when you are.
All right, let's do this.
Chief Stanley took over the screen. So I'll let Chief Stanley take it away with Fire Department.
Yeah, are you, you all seen a shiny red fire truck picture right now?
No.
No, we see a blue, blue window screen.
All right. Try again.
And Mike, if you could refer to the page numbers, if you can. Now we see a red fire truck.
Perfect.
Yes.
Which is all you want us to see anyway. I know that.
We don't have much, but we got shiny toys. So thank you, Madam Mayor and members of council, that always appreciate the opportunity to present our budget, you know, and some of our, for the next year and some of the things that we were able to get done in the previous year with you. You know, I know this is a tremendous amount of time, you know, and is even more complicated by the the virtual setting. So always appreciate, you know, the commitment of council members to be here for the city and for the citizens to go through these workshops. The good news is, you know, we initially had been scheduled for an hour and a half. I am relatively confident we will not be taking that long. So wanted to start with good news. But as we, we dive forward, you know, I don't want this to be death by PowerPoint, but you know, we had a lot of visuals and graphics that, that we wanted to share with some data. So I thought this might be the best format to, to put this in. So like I said, I'll try not to belabor any part of it so that you don't go to sleep watching, you know, PowerPoint slides ad infinitum. The first thing we want to touch on is, you know, is at the beginning of the budget for the fire department, pages, starts on page seventy-three and seventy-four. You know, clearly like everybody else in the city, all the other departments, you know, in concert with accomplishing the strategic plan, you know, we, we measure our key performance indicators or KPIs. You know, I was able to, to watch part of James Robbie's presentation yesterday where he talked about how well that relationship is working between the central garage and the fire departments, you know, and how much that has improved our ability to keep our frontline vehicles, you know, that's not our reserves and backups and everything. We just look at, you know, the, the ones that are, are ready to respond to nine-one-one calls are those available ninety percent of the time or better. You know, and we've really been able to show a lot of improvement this year. You know, you see that we've been in the mid nineties, you know, for a bulk of the year. September, we dipped down a little bit. You know, that's because the fire trucks are getting tired. You know, that we've got two on order, which I'll talk a little bit more about, but that council approved through the capital improvement plan last year. You know, so we've got some rigs that are ready to be replaced. We'll take delivery of those early November to mid-November. And then I anticipate that number to go back up. And I'll talk pretty, pretty fast as we motor through this. At any time, if anybody has any questions, comments, or concerns, just, you know, give me a shout out and I'll, I'll slow down. Training, we've been able to, to really make some, some strides forward with being able to track our training hours. That we implemented a learning management system at the beginning of this year so we can more accurately track our training hours. You know, so you can see our firefighters complete thousands and thousands of hours of, of training every month and every year. You know, and that keeps us performing at a high level operationally, but also keeps us above our KPI of eighty percent of the department meets the training hours. Moving on to our ambulance utilization, you know, this is something we are, are watching extremely closely right now. That's, you know, it's been interesting progression through the year with this as COVID had impacted initially on March, April, May-ish of our call volume, particularly for EMS calls, went down quite a bit. You know, we're, we're seeing it bounce back up. That even though we've discontinued the transfers, you know, as you all know, earlier this month, we're really starting to see that unit hour utilization creep up towards that twenty-four hour mark. That's, you know, that's a big threshold indicator for us. So we're closely monitoring that, you know, weekly, if not daily, to, to see where are we at, you know, as the pandemic continues to, to increase and particularly our numbers here in Winnebago County.
Excuse me, Chief. You said twenty-four hour. Did you mean twenty-four percent?
Yeah, sorry.
If you could describe that, because it's been a year since you did the fire study and we got a couple new council members. And at least, I, I just want to make sure council understands what that is because that was fundamental in the decision to end our, our transport service.
Absolutely. You know, that's twenty to twenty-four percent really is your, your sweet spot, you know, kind of like Goldilocks, you know, below twenty too low, above twenty-four too high, twenty, twenty-four just right. That's, and you know, how we, we look at that is, twenty-four percent, you know, twenty to twenty-four percent of the time your ambulance should be on a call. You know, that it should be actively involved in either, you know, responding, on scene treating, or transporting a patient. You know, so it should be available the other, you know, eighty-ish, you know, seventy-five, eighty-ish percent of the time. You know, so it should be available the other, you know, 80-ish, you know, 75, 80-ish percent of the time. That, so that's a national and industry standard that we look at. You know, like I said, once you get to above that 24% threshold, you're overworking that ambulance. You know, that's, you start looking at putting additional units in service. City Manager Roloff, do you think that explains it or dive deeper?
Um, just if you could clarify on the chart we're looking at there, it's a little hard to read, but, so the treatment and transport, those treatments listed, that next column over, is that supposed to be in hundreds of hours? Is that, is that what that's representing?
Yes. So, you know, this is for all three ambulances, you know, we'll just take that top line where it says treatment and transport BLS. The OOS is out of service hours, so.
Okay.
There were 1,913 hours, the ambulances were out of service for this call type, which amounted to 40% of the out of service time.
Okay, thank you. I, I thought the column was trying to say that that was represented as hundreds of hours. Out of service. Very good. Thanks.
Uh huh.
I think you're good, Mike. Keep going.
Okay, very good. You know, and then KPIs on our response times, you know, this is from the time of the call until we arrive on scene. So from when you call 911 till, till a Fire Department unit shows up in front of that incident is your total response time. You know, we have a goal, which is again, a national and industry standard of we want to be there 90% of the time, six minutes. You know, and you can see we're, we've been well short of that this year, you know, which is concerning. Things that we're doing to address that, you know, and I anticipate in the next year, a lot of that will level out, because we've made the changes with the inter-facility transfers, you know, that, you know, as I had explained in great length before, that that creates a ripple effect or a domino effect, because our units are responding from different locations than they normally would, having to wait on scene longer, et cetera, et cetera. We are also, I've been working with Winnebago County Sheriff's Office and the Communications Center to implement ABL or Automatic Vehicle Location. So right now, you know, it's, let's picture it as a neighborhood, probably is the easiest way to explain it. You know, these are the constraints, you know, the boundaries of your neighborhood, and you have a neighborhood firehouse. So your neighborhood firehouse is right here in the middle, but the call is way over here, and my last call was way over here. That's a long response time. With that automatic vehicle locator, it will find the closest unit, available unit to that incident, and will automatically dispatch them. You know, so that has a tremendous impact on response times. So we're hoping to have that, all the logistics of it and the bugs worked out of it towards the end of this year, so that we can put that in place. You know, one of the other staffing, staffing study recommendations was putting timers in the apparatus bay, so that we can, can get more accurate data of when are we responding, you know, in some dashboarding measures that we're going to put in place, so that we can continue to be more efficient and more effective and work towards that KPI.
Chief Stanley?
Sir.
Yeah, this is Mike Ford here. Are our physical locations of the Fire Department's conducive to good response times? You know, they in line with our city's development patterns?
Yeah, I have a very technical answer to that. Maybe. That's, you know, what is the next layer for us as this all corrects, is then evaluate, you know, where should the stations be? You know, do we need to relocate stations or create additional stations? Or do we need to add additional units in a particular station? You know, because if the downtown station is out all the time, and that's pulling the next station, and then the next station, and the next station, maybe we need to put another fire truck downtown, you know, so that's going to take some further analysis, but we had to build the foundation, right, of correct the system to take that deeper dive.
Sounds good, Chief. Just trying to get an idea of how much of this is, is management issues that we can resolve? That sounds like you're on top of, and how much are structural, but it sounds like you are all over it. So thank you.
Thank you. You know, and what will, will help us with this and what the future looks like, you know, this is, I know you've heard several departments talk about working with ESRI, ESRI, or GIS, or ArcGIS, and all the same umbrella. That, you know, we're creating dashboards for the Fire Department as well, you know, so this is a sample of where we're at with it right now, where we'll have that ability to look at some of these things, you know. So for example, you see there in the middle, that's the distribution of calls, you know, and we can filter by types of calls. We can look at number of calls per station, you know, how does it compare, as you see in the bottom right, compared to last week, last month, last year, you know, we get on the left, you know, flags of where are outliers? What were our longer response times, so that we're able to look at this in, you know, nearly live time to make those decisions, you know, and evaluate that in, as this, this KP, or this ESRI project moves forward and we get the dashboards done, these are going to be things that we can put forward facing, we can put on our website, that council will be able to see, that our firefighters will be able to see, you know, so that we can have a lot more clarity and transparency around what do our numbers look like. And then, so as we have these discussions down the road, like you're talking about Council Member Ford of where should stations be? And, you know, this program will pot all that out for us, you know, so lots more automation as we move forward to building that infrastructure, so that we can make better and more informed decisions. Okay, moving on to, to our accomplishments, that's, you know, I've, I've heard it from several of my colleagues sharing with you already of, you know, despite the complications and the struggles of 2020, you know, we've been able to get a lot done, which I think is, you know, a remarkable commentary on our city and our city staff, you know, all the employees, that we're still moving the entire organization and department by department forward, you know, in times of adversity and turmoil and uncertainty. So some of the things that I want to highlight from the budget presentation last year, you know, from the budget approval process, that the Fire Department takes very seriously being good stewards of our finances, you know, being good stewards of the taxpayers' dollar, and being responsive to the direction of council. You know, so we were fortunate enough last year in the budget process to secure four additional FTEs, that to increase our staffing levels, that's in addition to those four, we had some attrition through retirements. You know, so we ended up hiring a total of eight firefighters last year, and those are the proud smiling faces that you see looking at you in the top left-hand corner. That we also secured the funding in the capital improvement plan from council to purchase and erect the training tower. You know, that's a huge step forward for us, you know, many of you were able to be there at the ribbon cutting, and we appreciate that. But this has already been a huge success. Our firefighters were immediately out there training and taking advantage of the opportunity, and are really excited about the, that chance to train and look forward to more opportunities in the future. You know, again, shout out to many other departments in the city, you know, for Alan David and Alan Davis and his department, you know, helped us with all the zoning issues, Public Works helped us with, you know, the construction and the engineering of the pad, and you know, it was really a team effort. We appreciate that. In the middle, you see a happy, smiling face who's on the call with us today. We were also approved last year to hire a management analyst. And, you know, if you have not met her yet, her name is Mary Jo Van Gomple, has been a tremendous asset for us. You know, as you see the, that dashboard, and you know, some of the tracking of the KPIs, and as we go through this with all the data that we present, it's been an instrumental change for us in being able to make better, more informed decisions, you know, and to move the department forward. In the center there, you know, it's kind of a mushed up graphic, but that's the two new fire trucks, what they'll look like, that we were approved to purchase last year. Like I said earlier, we'll get those about mid-month, next month, that I think we're taking delivery the 13th, if I recall correctly. And they are going to be beautiful fire trucks, very functional. They were designed in part, in large part by our firefighters to meet, you know, the needs that they have operationally. That's, we're very excited to put those two new units in service that will better protect the city, and like I said, pardon me, anticipate that, that KPI around rigs being available 90% of the time should go up. Mid-left, you see the get the data first, and I'll talk quite more extensively about that, but we were selected to participate in a nationwide study on firefighter, Fire Department's culture of safety. You know, where our members were surveyed, and this Drexel University has put this, this evaluation, this focus survey together to give us an idea, you know, and be able to benchmark ourselves against other departments across the country and throughout our region about our culture of safety, you know, because as we see that, that number decrease for engagement, for burn, increase for burnouts, you know, disengagement, all those type of things, you know, that, they have proven that that directly relates to workplace injuries, you know, and time lost. Like I said, I'll talk to that, that again. Sure, all of you have seen the citizen survey that the City of Oshkosh partners with the University of Wisconsin Oshkosh to complete. You know, and I'm very proud to point out that, again, you know, we were, were highly rated, you know, for now several years in a row, and you know, we are one of the highest rated departments throughout the history of that survey in the eyes of the community. So we really value that input, you know, and like I said, we're measuring our performance in a lot of ways, but customer satisfaction is incredibly important to us. Also this year, you know, you see the big number two there, that the Insurance Service Office comes in and evaluates the, the fire protection for every community, you know, and that's how they set their rating, and that rating sets what insurance will be for commercial and private residences, commercial buildings and private residences. It's a scale of one to 10, that's one being the highest, you know, and 10 clearly being the lowest. We have traditionally been a two, you know, every five years, they come in and evaluate us. And we've completed that evaluation. One of the things that historically has held us back was a lack of good training records, which we've corrected that with the learning management system, and the training tower. You know, so we anticipate improving our score quite a bit. That last, last year, we were very close to a three, you know, it's 80 is a two, 80%, we were an 80.19. You know, you have to be 90% or greater to be a one, and we anticipate improving our score a great deal. And we're still waiting for official word, you know, that we, we tried and tried to get them to push through and give us the, the final classification before today, so we could share it with you, but with COVID, they're moving a little slow too. But we anticipate some exciting news in the future with that. And then lastly, you see the Matrix Consulting Group, you know, that's in 2019, late 2019, we completed the Staffing and Employment Study per council's direction. That you should have all got a copy of the crosswalk where we looked at what have we done? What are we doing now and what still needs to be done? You know, and I hadn't realized it until we put this together, and I won't go through it, I'll, excuse me, I'll have you do that at your leisure. But the things that came out of that study, you know, by the end of this year, we will have the bulk of them implemented. You know, like I said, again, we want to be, be responsible, we want to be good stewards, we want to be responsive to council's direction. The only handful of things that are not moving forward or still out there in the red and the limbo, or the majority of them are things we're not at a trigger point for yet. You know, for example, an additional station on the northwest side, you know, once we got to a certain level of building and development, we're not there yet, you know, so there's things that are, were further, longer term, but, you know, actionable items, we've, we've pretty well taken action on them, you know, that there's still a few dangling things, and I'll talk about one of them here in a moment, but I hope that council is pleased with the traction that we've made on the, on the staffing study and those recommendations already. All right, I'll take a breath. Questions so far?
Um, I'm not sure if it's time to ask this question yet, but this leads into another question. How many calls, Chief Stanley, would you say OFD response to that are maybe nonviolent, but maybe welfare check or mental health disturbance calls? Are you guys tracking those? And I'm not quite sure. It may tie into one of the pieces that you have in the progress report you provided us about, you know, how communication staffing works with 911. I'm just trying to understand the scope of that, and I'll be asking the same thing with the Police Department.
Sure. We, we do track those numbers, you know, and so the National Fire Incident Reporting System identifies, you know, the different codes for call types. So when, when you look at, you know, our paramedic goes on a call and it's an overdose, you know, you've, you've overdosed on medications intentionally, you tried to kill yourself. They may classify that as an overdose, because you know, that's the, the problem at hand, you know, so we may, it may have substance abuse issue is one, you know, alcohol intoxication is another code, so. So they are, they're broken down into finer points, you know, and then we look at, all right, how many of these capture, you know, some type of mental health emergency or, or mental health contributed to that? You know, that's, you know, I've campaigned loud and strong about fall prevention, and you know, that's our, our number two, or excuse me, our number one call type. And number two is alcohol or substance use, number three is mental health. You know, and I think two and three generally coexist together, you know, and have a direct correlation. So that's our, our next goal, you know, our next attention area is, you know, as we reduce falls and have worked on that, we need to bring those numbers down, and now I know what's going to, going to pop into number one, it's going to be substance abuse and mental health. You know, so we're working to try to identify, you know, different coalition, so that we can work with partnerships, you know, looking at, doing quite a bit of research into some different models that other organizations have across the state and across the country of how do we address that need, you know. In my time here, you know, I've been very interested and cognizant of community risk reduction, you know, not just fire prevention. We do a great job, an outstanding job with fire prevention, but how do we reduce the risks? You know, falls is one of them, substance abuse is another, you know, mental health is another threat to our, our community members. So what can we do around that? So I don't have the, the exact number, I can, you know, certain, off the top of my head, but I can certainly put that together for you.
Well, and I guess it, it leads me to, I guess, you know, the next piece of that question in that is, you know, is, are, are you and Chief Smith, are you guys having conversations about these, these other models of street crisis response teams where it's potentially nonviolent, but, you know, disturbing behavior? You know, in, with responsive, like paramedics, maybe a mental health specialist or peer support person on, on some of those that perhaps the police are responding to, just kind of curious if that's. Just kind of curious if that's something you guys are looking at?
It is. Yeah, it definitely is. Like I said, we've, we're invited to participate in a conference call with Milwaukee Fire Departments to look at what they're doing with a program called MORI, you know, where, where they're doing outreach and follow-ups through the fire departments. We're looking at several others across the country. So definitely an interest area for us.
Thanks for that.
All right. As far as our, our operating budgets, you know, it stayed very static from, from last year, you know, we'd had some, the, the expected increases around utilities and pay and benefits and things like that, but otherwise we're able to, to stay pretty static there, you know, we were able to, to allocate some more funds in some of the, the different lines because the, by moving PPE, which I'll talk about when we get to this, the capital improvement plan, you know, that's able to, to shift some, some monies around and also, you know, we've been able to accomplish a lot that, you know, over the past couple of years of areas of need, we've been able to, to attend to, you know, and then shift focus to the next need. So I don't really have a, a lot to say about the operating budget. You know, I'd rather spend more of the, the time around our enhancements.
And I would add that, you know, just two observations regarding the operating budget. One is that the full year of the impact of the additional personnel are reflected in here. That is a large contributor to the increase in the budget. What's not in there, and I mentioned yesterday, the, uh, the unclassified account covers any across the board increases. Any across the board increases for negotiations that are going on with our police and fire unions and transit unions are reflected in our, uh, in our unclassified budget, not reflected in here. So you can see that even with that, there's an increase of about, uh, oh, about $300,000 budget to budget. And it's primarily, um, it's primarily due to the full year impact of our, uh, of our new personnel.
So are you, are you seeing, okay, so if we're on page 20, or I'm sorry, 80, um, on the budget enhancement request. Mark, are you saying that, I'm, I'm sorry, I got confused what you were saying about what was in the unclassified?
If you go to page 77, I'm, I'm, I'm trying to explain what's not in the fire department budget on page 77. What's not in there are any across the board raises as a result of current negotiations.
Okay, sure.
That's not in there. What is in there, and I'm sorry, I, I, it's a $200,000 increase, not 300. I was looking at a different number. There's about a $200,000 increase and that's the full year impact of the enhancements that the council approved last year. We only funded those new positions for a partial year. So it's just, it's just the, the full year impact for that.
Okay, thanks.
Keep going, Chief, because there, there really isn't much more to the operating budget other than those, those factors because it is fairly static. You know, Chief talked about how well the relationship is with public works. And, uh, you know, I think you're going to start to see the, the fruits of that labor, um, over the next few years in terms of, uh, vehicle, cost for vehicle repairs. Uh, it takes a while for you to get the full benefit. But James and his staff are, are taking good care of the fire department's needs, recognizing that, that, that measure that the chief showed staying, uh, keeping his frontline vehicles uh, in operation as much as possible. They know that. And I think that's, uh, James commitment was adding the emergency vehicle technician certification to, uh, a few more of his staff in addition to the person that transferred over from, uh, the fire department, uh, to, to public work. So we've got, I believe, three people that are, uh, that can work on a vehicle, not just one, and that availability is going to help the fire department in the long run to get those, those vehicles back on the street and to get, get them more reliable, anticipating problems before they happen, noticing something that the mechanical tell the chief, hey, uh, you need to take a look at this, or they'll, or they'll just fix it in advance. So those proactive things are starting to get done, but there's a lot of catch-up to do and I think they're already making progress.
Agreed. So moving into, to our enhancements, you know, want to talk about the R2 enhancements and then you'll also reference a third from administrative services. You know, so I mentioned the focus survey that we completed, you know, via Drexel University, you know, one of the things that they, they surveyed is emotional exhaustion and how that, that leads to burnout. That's the, of all the departments, the 500 departments across the country that were surveyed, the highest rate for emotional burnout was 57 in regard to emergency medical services. We were 56, you know, that we were almost the highest. Same with the fire calls, they split it into EMS and fire calls. We were the highest, you know, those departments surveyed for burnout. You know, that's also looking into depersonalization where they're becoming less engaged. And like I said, well, all of these factors contribute directly to workplace injury or death of firefighters. You know, so we look at the depersonalization, again, they, they separated into EMS and fire. You know, max of 54, we were a 51, you know, well above the average of 42. Same with fire, 49, we were a 43, you know, so when you look at how we compare to the average, we're above average. You know, and that, as I said, was measures us against the nation, but also across the region, you know, so obviously we want to dive deeper into why is that? You know, we want our firefighters to be engaged and, you know, feel that their mental health, you know, is in a good place. Their wellbeing is in a good place, you know, and clearly we're not there. You know, one of the things that Drexel attributed these results to and potentially was the, the interfacility transfers. They're going to come back and do a follow-up survey to see how our, our scores have improved. But when we look at other reasons, you know, at the comments and things like that, one of the, the strong contributing factors is they're tired, they're worn out. You know, we're a very busy department, you know, especially comparatively to others in our region, that they run a lot of calls, but they also work a ton of overtime, you know, that between special events and, you know, some of those type of activities, it creates a lot of overtime opportunities for them, but, you know, also just daily, you know, filling assignments on fire trucks and ambulances, you know, that they're getting brought back in to, to fill those vacancies a tremendous amount, you know, to the degree that we have to mandatory them in and force them into work. And so they're, they're suffering from a tremendous workload, you know, especially this year, which I'll touch on in just a second. So we took a deeper dive around that, you know, that we had the good fortune to work with some college interns from across the country that's, and also work with a consultant that the city frequently works with. We worked with the finance department and our management analysts and human resources to really take a deep dive on, at what point, where's that tipping point? You know, that there is a cost savings for vacancy savings. It's cheaper sometimes to bring somebody in on overtime than pay them, you know, full-time wage and benefit, but at some point, where's that tip over where we're paying more in overtime? Little, you know, so not only being fiscally responsible, but, you know, also weighing in the, what does that look like on the strain of the employee? That's, the assumption is, you know, a constant is we cannot eliminate overtime 100%. You know, there's always going to be some form of overtime, you know, unless we hired 100 more firefighters and then we were far too, too fat. You know, you're always going to have some overtime, you know, calls that occur at shift change, things of that nature. But what the pie chart illustrates is, you know, the pre-scheduled and the called in, that's to, to fill a spite, a space daily on a fire truck or ambulance. You know, pre-scheduled means we knew it was coming because we didn't, we can look at how many people are on injury, how many people are in the COVID protocol, et cetera, and, and realize, okay, next Saturday, we're not going to have enough people. We'll, we'll schedule somebody, give them the opportunity to volunteer for that. Called in means, you know, something happened that day. Somebody gets hurt, has to go home, you know, that's, uh, that we're calling in that day, you know? Called in many times, and the majority of the time will result in mandatory overtime where we force them in. You know, so on the, the chart to, to your right, you can see, you know, historically for the, the past several years, what, you know, how that breaks down with the pre-scheduled versus special events and, you know, things like that. So like I said, we had to find out what's that tipping point? You know, where are we upside down with, uh, it's costing us more to, to bring in somebody on overtime than it would to have full-time employees? You know, so like I said, we've crunched a lot of data, you know, a lot of data to find out, should we hire some additional firefighters? You know, and what the, the result is and the recommendation we're making that if we added three firefighters of that eligible overtime, and that eligible overtime is the things that, that we can predict, you know, like I said, special events, there's always going to be overtime for special events. Calls at shift change, there's always going to be that. But the, the number that we can really address, you know, we could potentially impact that number by $290,000. You know, so we identified, you know, $291,500 in eligible overtime spending. You know, so we called in overtime for staffing 10,400 hours last year, which is a staggering amount. And then we looked at, if we add the three firefighters, you know, what does that cost all in, you know, for pay benefits for them? You know, that cost is 248,979. You know, so we looked at what can we reduce? What can we, what it cost us? You know, and that yielded us this information that what we had originally proposed in the 2021 budget was, you know, $552,300 in overtime spending. You know, and that's the same as we did last year, you know, that's been marched right out historically with what we've spent the last few years. You know, so we said, oh, for us to continue doing what we're doing now and overtime is going to cost at least $552,000. The total number of hours that can be reduced, like I said earlier, 2,901 and some dollars. You know, so we could potentially reduce 10,402 hours. You know, the recommendation is 3.2 fire, firefighters or 3.2 FDEs. It's hard to, to decide whether to, to cut from the top or the bottom to get down to that point two firefighter. So we said, let's just leave it at three. You know, that all-in cost comes to 248,979. You know, so the potential budget savings would be that 42,510. Now again, be mindful of that 3.2 number. We still need to, to factor that in, you know, especially this first year as we evaluate all this, you know? So we said, we're not comfortable yet just cutting that. But we would revise our overtime budget to 303,321 and increase our payroll and benefits accordingly for that 248,979. You know, so at worst, we view this as cost neutral to the city. That, so with neutral cost, we can add three firefighters and to reduce that, that overtime spending and that need for personnel. Last year with adding those four, that brought our staffing coefficient to 1.25, which was a huge step forward. Adding these additional three firefighters will bring us to 1.29. You know, where we really want to be is 1.3, 1.33. You know, it's pretty much the, the rule of thumb across the country. So it really brings us close to, to that magic number. You know, it reduces the, the stress and strain on the firefighters and allows us to spend our, our monies more efficiently so that we're not just paying out a bunch of overtime, you know, that we're getting more bang for our buck. You know, and it's particularly relevant as of today. We've got nine fire department employees in the COVID protocol that are on quarantine, you know, so we're getting thin. And as we look at what we referenced earlier, do we need to add additional ambulances? Because the unit hour utilization is too high, you know, that's, you know, as the pandemic continues to, to worsen potentially, we don't really have the, the bench strength, you know, to, to accommodate decreased staffing levels and increased volume, you know? So this helps us with our, our bench strength for, you know, global pandemics or local disasters. So I'm, I'm sure you have lots of questions around this enhancement. So I'll, I'll pause here before we move on to the second one.
Yeah, one, one of the things that I think is appropriate to point out, and I guess Russ can bring it up if he wants to. We did reduce the, the initial number that he has of 552,000. We reduced that number by 25,000, factoring in the reduction in overtime with the elimination of the transfer service because most transfers are done on an overtime basis. So I, just to let you know that that number, and that's what made it tight because that savings goes from 42,000 to about 17,000. So it's, it's a very tight window and that's why I felt it was appropriate, especially staffing increases, any full-time staffing increases. I want to counsel to look at this with eyes wide open. So, uh, Russ, I don't know if you have anything to add to that, but that's why we, you're going to see a different number in the budget on page 76 than what's on the slide. And I wanted to reconcile that.
Okay, that's pretty accurate, Mark, um, for, for council. If you want to look at, it's line item 6104, overtime pay. You can see once what it has been in the past, uh, what we're projecting for 2020. And I'm looking to carry that forward to 2021. So the chief initially asked for that 552,000, but, uh, in looking at where we're at and trying to keep the balanced budget in play, uh, we reduced it down to 527,300 as the recommended budget amount.
Chief, do you mind a question or two?
We have a question from, uh, Councilmember Crowsey.
Jake, go ahead and then I'll go after you.
Sure. Um, hi, Chief, Jake Crowsey. I have a question. Uh, you're looking to add the three firefighters and that would reduce the overtime hours 10,400. Those three firefighters wouldn't be working that much. So I was just wondering if you could explain a little how that would impact the reduction?
Yeah, absolutely. That's, you know, we, we looked at, at those numbers, you know, and we first calculated how many of those were full shifts? You know, so, you know, and why we, we have three on there. Not only does it, it make the, the numeric impact, but you know, also we have three different shifts, you know? So it, it doesn't work like with one or two because you got to have that additional firefighter on each shift. So makes a, a big impact there in those 24 hours, but also we have to, to cover partial shifts. You know, so that, you know, somebody goes homesick in the middle of the day or has to take, you know, leave because their hot water heater broke. You know, but now we don't have to bring somebody in for four hours here, six hours there, you know, things like that. So there will be days that they, they may be extra for part of the day, but, you know, we may move them from station to station to, to cover those. for part of the day, but you know, we may move them from station to station to, to cover those, those different days. You know, so, uh, when we, we total all that up, you know, they'll have, have a larger impact on, on that total number of hours.
Yeah, and I'm not sure if, uh, I want to make sure that, uh, all the council members are aware, the regular hour, annual hours for a firefighter is much greater than for, uh, civilians such as myself or even the chief. It's 2,912 hours. So that's where, uh, and I'm not sure if that factors in, but that's, um, that's how you calculate the 3.2, you're, you're dividing it by, um, by 2,912 hours per firefighter times three. That's why it gets to the 3.2, so that's why the, the overtime hours, uh, yeah, the savings are, uh, there with the 10,402.
Matt, uh, Councilmember Mogerhour?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, so Chief, uh, you know, I'll be honest, I'm always a little skeptical when, when I hear somebody's going to do something revenue neutral. But I appreciate that you're looking at this and that you're, you're taking that hard look at. I know I, I asked this, a very similar question of, of, uh, Chief Smith from the PD. It probably was two years ago in regards to, you know, their overtime budget, which is about double yours. So I appreciate that you're looking at it and, and trying to find ways to, to, to better the department and to reduce, reduce that overtime. So when you talked, you just mentioned it to Councilmember Crowsey's question. Obviously, you know, a bunch of this overtime is not planned, so we've got to be able to be, uh, react uh, in a, in a timely fashion for, for this to make sense. But you're, uh, you're willing, or you're willing to have this position be flexible, that they may jump between houses to cover that, that they may not be, you know, this position isn't going to just be put at Station 15 or Station, you know, one specific station, that they're going to be flexible to move back and forth.
Absolutely.
And then Russ, you've, uh, not that I don't trust, uh, Chief Stanley, because I have full faith and 100% trust in him and his staff, but Russ, you've crunched the numbers and are comfortable with, with telling us that this is revenue neutral, that next year, you're not going to come back to us and, and tell us that whoops, we made some large error and that the full cost is, is not neutral.
I think that's the million dollar question, um, when you look at it. I was, from a financial standpoint, uh, and being somewhat greedy from a, from a finance director's perspective, looking for more than just a break even. And, and part of this is, is the chief's ability to manage his overtime cost. You know, even with, uh, $42,000, having that reduction of $290,000 in overtime cost, it's, it really boils down to the chief being able to manage and, and control, uh, the overtime that's, that's going to be necessary, um, to see that savings. And, and, you know, in our internal discussions, I think some of the difficulty is, you know, it's, it's easy to measure where we've been at based on historical numbers. Uh, but as he was kind of alluding, it's difficult in today's environment. And not knowing how many firefighters could potentially be out because of COVID and, and what would be the demand for overtime, uh, based on some of those other, uh, public health issues or, and/or, uh, injuries. So I'm a little skeptical, I, I want, I would have wanted to see a little bit more in savings. And it, while it sounds good, the difficulty is going to be in actually managing, uh, the utilization on overtime.
Chief Stanley, or, um, Matt, uh, Councilmember Mogerhour, were you finished or did you have follow-up? Councilmember Mogerhour?
Oops, sorry. Thought I hit the button again. Have a follow-up, yes.
Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, so Russ, I appreciate the honest assessment. Um, I'm right there with you, just the skeptical nature of it. But Chief, I'm, I'm, I'm happy to support it if it's revenue neutral. Uh, why wouldn't I be, uh, to reduce overtime and, and to add members to the staff that we need? Because we do need it in the fire service. But it would be, it'll be a difficult budget cycle next year to come to us, um, if those numbers aren't, aren't pretty close. You know, that'll, that'll be a tough sell to come back and, and have that conversation with us. So like he, he, like he mentioned, managing it will be key. And I, I trust you have it in you and, and your staff and your management staff has it, just, uh, just given my, my two cents on the thoughts of it.
Sure. No, and I, I appreciate that support, uh, and confidence in us that's, you know, in full, full disclosure, you know, in these conversations we've had, excuse me, with the finance director and with, uh, the city manager, you know, if we have to put 40 firefighters on quarantine at the same time, we're going to, we're going to blow that, that overtime budget right out of the water. Uh, but that'll happen whether we hire the three firefighters or not. You know, that's, uh, so I can't say, oh no, absolutely, we can, can stick to that, you know, because disasters and emergencies happen, but like I said, that, that's explainable. You know, that's not mismanagement, that's circumstance, you know, so, uh, you know, I think we've all learned in the past year, you know, who knows what tomorrow's going to look like. And so, so that isn't really a reflection on whether we hire the three or not. You know, that will spike our overtime budget or PD's budget or anybody's.
Speaking of which, um, Chief Stanley, so, um, with these proposed firefighters, um, I'm assuming they would also be cross-trained paramedics. I, I guess kind of going back to an earlier question, uh, in talking about, uh, addressing some of those um, higher responses to, uh, mental health or substance, uh, issues after the falls. Is there a potential that three additional firefighters cross-trained as paramedics? Is there such a thing as, uh, special training with de-escalation or some of the ability to reduce PD's overtime in addressing some of those other calls? I guess.
Well, first of all, all of our firefighters are paramedics. So that's, that's always the case. I don't think you can draw any conclusion on what the chief's proposing here, that it would have an impact on the police department. That would probably be a question for Chief Smith, but there's, there are many more issues going on that the fire department wouldn't necessarily be the solution, um, to, uh, some of the issues you're raising.
But unarmed, but unarmed medic teams, right? That could potentially respond to some of those that are creating other overtime with the PD, I guess is what I'm trying to get at. You know, I, I could see us potentially supporting more than this um, to try and address those issues if it were deemed feasible uh, to, to create those, those crisis response teams that, uh, could take, perhaps reduce some of the PD response time.
Our fire, and I'll let Chief speak to this, but I, but our firefighters are no more trained in crisis management than our police. You're just replacing one with another, but you're still going to have the issue of they're not trained mental health professionals, even though they do a lot of mental health, um, uh, assistance, uh, with, with every call they do. Um, I don't think it would matter whether it was a, a police officer or a firefighter, but I'll let, I'll let Chief Stanley, uh, uh, comment on that as well.
And I think that the concept is addition to them in those medic teams is, uh, you know, the psych response or the, uh, peer respite or, uh, those other specialists for those medic teams. So, um, maybe I, maybe I didn't articulate that question well.
Yeah, so I take a, a 30,000-foot view of it, you know. Uh, I like the forward thinking, you know, and I'm supportive of forward thinking in, through our fire department, and I know my colleague Chief Smith is as well. That's, you know, that, some of those, you know, alternate response teams and modeling, I think that's a, a separate proposal. You know, that what we're, we're struggling with these last couple of years is to get right-sized for the now. You know, that's, uh, we had some, some catching up to do with the, the four firefighters we hired last year. It was a tremendous help. These three firefighters will be a tremendous help uh, moving forward, you know, discontinuing the transfers, you know, putting the AVL in. We've got to be able to, to cover our bases right now in our existing demand for service, you know, which we're, I think, uh, all of us are struggling with. So that we can reduce some of that burden, uh, create some flexibility so that we can start implementing and then, you know, looking at forward-thinking programs, uh, like what you're suggesting and, you know, any number of others.
If I could, uh, interject something at this point, uh, this did not come to mind until I listened to the questions that the council members, uh, were asking. One of the challenges that I heard council members, um, say, and it, it certainly demonstrates the concern that Mr. Van Gomper and I brought out, but, um, maybe there's a, a bit of a, a balancing act that we could do. My big concern is adding three staff that if this doesn't work, then we have to eliminate those staff. But the reality that the, the fire department has, as well as the police department, the fire department has is there's always turnover. When you have an agency as large, uh, as we do for our size city, there's typical turnover. And I've authorized, I think, uh, the chief, when he showed the photograph earlier of his recruiting class of eight, technically, when the, uh, when the recruiting class was first brought on board, I think there were only five vacancies. But I have, uh, traditionally permitted, uh, Chief Stanley, uh, to overfill because by the time the recruit class is done, there have been times when he's had eight vacancies. Or in some cases, weren't you even up to 11 at one point, Chief?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so maybe one of the things we could do is not change the authorized strength, but permit the chief to overfill, get those three extra positions and see how it goes. And if we can achieve the savings that are being projected, um, we'll be able to demonstrate that with real-time results. If not, we don't, we don't, uh, I don't go over the authorized strength anymore. I just go back to the authorized strength. That way we could experiment with this idea, but not lock ourselves into permanent positions. At, again, and I wouldn't necessarily look for an answer now, uh, but I certainly would throw that out there as something that we can talk about internally, because I haven't talked to, to Russ about this or Mike, but we can take a look at that possibility, because I have done it for his recruit classes. If I just authorize, pretend there's three more positions, let them do that and then see how it works, uh, to get that flexibility in there. And if the experiment works, then we can come back this time next year and say, ah, we got the 42,000 savings that the chief estimated. You know, we think this goes. That way there's no change in the budget, but we still give the chief the flexibility, the, uh, the flexibility to, to experiment with this idea, which I think has merit. I've done this in the past, not with fire, but I've done it in other 24-hour operations. I've done it with police, I've done it with police dispatch. And the theory works. I, I can tell you that what the chief is proposing in theory works. It's just pretty tight here, and that's one of the things I want to make sure that we're, we're okay on.
Chief Smith, uh, this is Councilmember Ford here, hopefully I'm okay to go. Uh, first off, thanks for presenting it, uh, this way with an analytical argument that tends to go further with, uh, with me. I understand the concerns of some of the other council members and, um, the finance director, but that's kind of the nature of this thing, right? Budgeting is, uh, predicting the future based off of, uh, best estimates and, and information. But I, I guess I'm more interested, or as interested in some of the survey data um, you, you presented earlier about, about burnout and a comment you made, um, about overtime and some of these call-ins being a cause of some of that burnout? Because if, if that is correct, I want to make sure I'm understanding this correctly. Um, we would expect to see some performance impacts, positive performance impacts if, uh, filling these positions reduces overtime and reduces burnout. I just want to make sure I'm understanding that correctly and that we would expect to see some improvement on those indicators as well if we take this action.
Yeah, I would absolutely anticipate that, you know, that's, you know, we've taken a, a lot of other steps secondary to the survey to, to try to, uh, address the, the burnouts and the, uh, the stressors and the confidence that the fire departments have that safety is a priority and things like that. So, you know, as I mentioned, um, Drexel is willing to come back and do a secondary survey, you know, post-implementation, so that, uh, we can see if the, the measures have improved. You know, and if, if they don't, we have, you know, we have the questions, we can self-administer as well. You know, so, uh, we view this more as a longitudinal issue. We surveyed a point in time and you've got responses around that point in time, but as we make changes and, you know, make improvements within the organization, we want to make sure that that's, that's being impacted in the perception.
And to, to that point, uh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Mike.
I, so I really do hope that when we, when we, whether we go with, uh, same manager roll-offs, um, what he floated there, or, or another, another way of filling these positions. I would like to see us come back with, um, with that updated, um, survey data from Drexel or self-administered so that we can evaluate not just the financial impacts, but the performance impacts, what we're getting for our, uh, for our money.
Absolutely.
Yeah, Chief, one, uh, question, uh, because when we went over that survey, gosh, it's been several months now. One of the factors that I want to give Chief credit for and council credit for is that part of that, um, issue of being taxed was the, uh, were the transfers, transfers had, were, were a component of it. It's not isolated to, to this overtime, it's, it's, it's to all the overtime. And when we have to call these folks in for unannounced overtime, because what we were doing is we didn't want to minimize our availability, but we were, we were taking people off their regular shift to go do a transfer. And then we would scramble to find a crew to backfill them while they went on the transfer. That causes a lot of angst with, with our folks and hopefully we'll see some movement on that number because of, of the, getting out of the transfer business. And Chief, is that, is that a fair statement? I thought I remember seeing some of the, the open-ended comments being that transfers were still weighing heavily on your staff.
Yeah, it wasn't so much, because we weren't backfilling them with overtime. You know, we were adding that to their existing day. So, you know, they've run calls, been busy doing fire department duties all day, and then we send them out at, uh, 11 o'clock at night on a five-hour round trip to Milwaukee. You know, and now they're further sleep deprived and coming back. So the, the transfers didn't directly relate to overtime, but you are correct. They had a tremendous impact on, uh, the, towards the exhaustion of our firefighters.
Chief, could I ask about transfers related to, um, mental health? So these transfers were ambulance, um, for, uh, uh, hospital-initiated transfers, right, to another hospital?
Correct.
It, it's been my personal observation, anecdotally with family members and friends who, um, have had to go from a mental health situation to another mental health situation, that police are, um, taking them from one to the other. Is, is that exclusive? Are the transfers that you're referring to, uh, excluding any of those, I guess, co-transfers? Do you even do those?
No, they, they do exclude that because by state statutes, an ambulance cannot transport somebody with a behavioral health emergency. You know, they have to be in a secure vehicle, so it's either got to be, you know, a law enforcement officer, or it's got to be a, um, security company that's, you know, we're not able to, to transfer interfacility with, for those behavioral health emergencies. So that's everybody statewide.
I see. Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Can I just ask one question, um, and thank you for the, the breakdown of this. And I had a question similar to what my, uh, Councilmember Ford mentioned, but you said it much more eloquently than I could have. But could you, uh, just go back to slide 14, um, the breakdown, uh, for the overtime? I was just curious, um, I noticed, uh, starting in 2018, I think, uh, was when the special event. I noticed, starting in 2018, I think, was when the special event overtime started. Was there something that changed in 2018 when that category started showing up for overtime?
If I'm not mistaken, that's when we put the ordinance in as a city for special events, you know, and that became a separate category. You know, so that the whole application process, the reimbursement from the event coordinator, you know, I think that's where that's reflected is prior to that, it didn't happen that way.
Okay.
Chief, just one more follow-up. I wanted to make sure, because I missed a point I forgot to mention before. Once again, fully supporting adding the additional staff members. I've had conversations with you and Chief Smith, and really, it goes for the whole organization, but you two, your two organizations in general, take a big brunt of our special events. And just as you mentioned it, it's that burnout. And that's one of my main concerns with our protective services is the burnout, the physical burnout, as well as the emotional burnout from just being on all the time, as well as some of the situations you guys are put into. So, if this lessens that burden and creates a better environment for the full force, it's just another win for me to support it. So, I just wanted to make sure I touched on that because I know we have talked about that during strategic planning sessions and other times that that's important to me. I know it's important to all council and city manager roll-off too, but the physical and emotional well-being of our full staff is very important, especially in these services.
Perfect, thank you.
It looks like Councilmember Paschal, were you trying to ask a question also? Unmute, there you go.
I was trying. Yeah, actually, my question relates to special event revenues in regards to that line item, 4523. As perusing the budget for the police department as well, they indicated, you know, that it's similar in the sense that they lost revenue in regards in 2020 regarding that. But then, when they budgeted for the next year, it was still considerably less than what they, than what they had previously budgeted for. So, I'm wondering, in the fire department's case, why we, why you still went with the $100,000 revenue budgeted number when 2021 may turn out to be similar in regards to special event revenues?
And Mary Jo, if you want to jump in here at any point, please feel welcome to. But as my memory serves, we did that based on current projection. You know, and rather than say, oh, we think this will be over and we'll come back full force to special events next year, you know, I don't know what that looks like. That's, you know, we had hoped we'd be having trick-or-treat and Christmas parades, and that's not working out so well. So, we were more cautious than we were optimistic, if I remember right. But Mary Jo, if you have anything to add, please chime in.
No, I think you covered it correctly. That's exactly what we were talking about was we don't know how long, you know, when is a vaccine going to be available and how is it going to continue to impact special events next year? So, I think we were being on the conservative side.
Okay. Just one follow-up then, and that, where, and maybe this is a question for Russ, but when we get those revenues that come in, specifically to special events, where do they go? What areas do they cover? Do they cover, you know, pay, regular pay? Is there, you know, do you portion out a little bit for several different light items there? Or just wondering how that all works out?
I don't know if you're trying to speak. Chief Stanley, could you reduce that screen share so I can see? Russ, are you trying to speak or respond? Please unmute, thank you.
Yeah, we're trying to come up with the answer to Councilmember Paschal's question. And as I understand it, it's basically how do we account for the special event fees and get it allocated into the different revenue accounts? I don't know, Jennifer, if you could chime in and help me with that detail or not?
Well, let me rephrase that, if I may.
Okay.
What expenses does the special event revenue cover?
Yeah, when we do the rate, and we came to council with a rate, we do look at the labor cost and the rate, and we try to cover that. We try to cover all of our direct benefit costs. So, we look at labor plus benefits and try to recapture that amount. I don't have those numbers in front of me. I remember coming back to council at some point when we did that, I think at the beginning of 2020. Get that back, information back out to you.
Sure, and I don't know how much it relates to 2020 because obviously, we didn't have a lot of special events. But, you know, chief, I think I heard you say that some of the overtime also relates to special events in a normal year. So, you know, so I guess I'm looking for, you know, like, and maybe you showed that and I just didn't see it or didn't connect, you know, kind of a percentage breakdown of where does our overtime go to right now, you know, completely in regards to, does only 10% go to special events, 80, 90, 90 go to, you know, doing normal responses along those lines? Thoughts?
Yeah, excuse me, let me pull this back up. Are you seeing the slides again? Or it's taking its sweet time? Here we go.
It's not quite up yet. There we go, there it is.
So, if you look at the pie graph for 2019, they're on the left-hand side. So, special events accounts for about 14%.
Okay.
The overall overtime.
Thank you.
One of the things we need to take a look at, and I was just kind of looking at the police budget and the fire budget, is I want to take a second look at the estimated revenue for 2021. I think it looks like we reduced some of our assumptions for the police department, especially event fees, but not the fire. So, let me look at that a little time, and I can get back to you before or at the public hearing on November 4th.
I guess the bigger picture question that I have is, while we had reduced calls and service in response to special events or serving those special events, did the, let's call COVID a special event, has that eclipsed what would have been used in-person hours for those special events?
The short answer is yes, and I believe I addressed that in my budget message somewhere because that issue did come up. Essentially, COVID overtime and really, it's coverage. Both chiefs have had to spend a good deal of overtime because so many people are in quarantine. And, you know, unlike me who can, you know, work from home during quarantine, that is not the case with our emergency personnel. They need to be present and on duty. So, that's a challenge, and essentially, it's kind of swapped it out, but obviously, the revenue goes away with it. That's why I think Russ pointed out, we should take a look at that to make sure because Chief Stanley did not reduce his special event revenue. Chief Smith did. So, we have to reconcile that to be consistent.
Thank you.
Any other questions on the first enhancement, or are we ready to go to two?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor.
That second enhancement is focuses around tuition reimbursement. City manager roll-off already talked a little bit about the nature of the fire department at size, you know, for attrition, you know, which this will also further reinforce the ability to absorb positions in the future if we had to, if the overtime wasn't diminished. You know, one of the concerns that we have is as we look at who's retirement eligible throughout the organization, you know, that we have eligible to retire in five years or less, a third of the department, as you see there on the top. Eligible to retire in three years or less, 22.9%. You know, so almost a quarter of our department is, could turn over in the next few years, you know, and up to a third in the next five. And as you look at the chart itself on the breakdown of the positions, you know, you see a lot of those positions are in supervisory or management positions. You know, so how do we back, not only backfill the void of retirements and the loss of institutional knowledge, but how do we replace supervisors and managers with people that are well-prepared through education as well? So, we did a survey, I'll buzz through this quick because I know we're long on time, but we had an 88, excuse me, an 81% return rate on a Survey Monkey on education and tuition assistance. You know, so I'm sure all of you know that's an incredible rate of return. So, something that our members in the fire department are very interested in. Most of them have an associate's degree, you know, very few of them have a bachelor's degree or graduate degree. You know, that we looked at, what's the runway look like for them? You know, and the bulk are going to be here from five to 20-plus years as a member of the fire department. You know, and when we say they'll be here with the fire department, you know, I believe that to be true because we do not see the transient nature of other employees and, you know, other type of industries where they move from one organization to another. Once they're here, they stay here, fortunately. And we want to continue to be able to recruit and retain employees through supporting them. That's, you know, 80%, greater than 80% of the respondents, so they want to advance. They want to fill those positions. But, you know, then we asked them, how close are you to finishing a degree? You know, if the bulk of them are one to three courses away, you know, hey, maybe you just do that on your own. You know, to finish that baccalaureate degree or higher, you know, they're several classes away, which means, you know, it would have a huge financial impact on them and their families to move into higher education. You know, so then we asked them, if we offer some type of tuition assistance, would that be an incentive for you to return to college? You know, because clearly, if we offered them tuition assistance, they said, nah, I'm still not going back, you know, what's the point? You know, the vast majority of the respondents said yes, you know, that they want that tuition assistance as a motivator for them to return to college and be able to advance. That's, as I mentioned, recruitment and retention are a huge issue for us, and I know that you're probably hearing this from all my peers as department heads, that, you know, as we compete for talent in the job markets, it's becoming more and more difficult. You know, certainly is for protective services like police and fire. But how do we make ourselves more attractive for candidates? And I think a big part of that for recruitment is the tuition assistance, and then how do we retain them? You know, how do we get them to stay here so that they can accomplish their goals of promotion? You know, that's, you know, I have a lot of concerns about how we move forward in the future with filling many of these leadership positions, formal leadership positions, with people that aren't able to advance their education. That's, obviously, I'm a big supporter of education and advocate for education, you know, having received degrees from higher learning institutions, you know, I want to have that same advantage for the employees. So, I think we have a tremendous demonstrated need. And like I said, I don't think that the fire department is alone in that need. You know, certainly, Chief Smith and I have talked about that a great deal, you know, very confident you'll hear him echo some of my concerns later today. But, you know, we would like to at least get some movement and momentum towards tuition assistance. You know, the fire department would be honored to pilot a program for the city, or, you know, if it's council's will and direction, we would be happy to participate in a larger program as well. So, with that being said, I'll open it up for discussion.
I would just add one comment to that. I asked Chief Stanley to talk about this because of the data he had collected. That information about the number of people eligible to retire, that type of statistic could be generated in virtually every department in the city. This is a real issue. The chief was able to illustrate it. This is not just a public safety issue, although it's clearly an issue in public safety and in this case, fire. But this issue exists across our organization. Councilmember Allison Osby may recall that Charlie Carlson, when he made a presentation to council easily five-plus years ago, he talked about this, and that was five years ago. And we track the number of people who are eligible to retire in 10 years, and that number is over half of our employees. And this was five years ago. I don't recall what the number is now, but five years ago, it was over half of our employees were eligible to retire within 10 years. So, this is a very real issue for all of us. Thank you.
Chief, a question about this. So, if there was a budget enhancement of this $10,000, I guess, I'm assuming that would be offered to, you know, several folks. What would be the thought about retaining those folks that take advantage of that? I know there's been discussions about training folks and getting them up to speed, and they get pulled away to other cities. I mean, would you anticipate some kind of commitment in return for that tuition reimbursement or clawback, if you will, if they left in a certain time? And then, the other piece of that is, if folks are pretty burnt out, you know, with overtime and that, just wondering how school fits into that already demanding set of circumstances?
If I could, I'll answer the first part of that. That's where you develop a policy, and that's HR's job. There are ways to do it. One of the more creative ways I've seen it is tuition assistance is given in the way of a forgivable loan. So, if you stay so many years, it's forgiven. That's a good way to do it because they sign a promissory note. There's a lot of ways to do that. So, there's plenty of ways to do that. I would suggest if, I asked the chief to bring it up because the chief put this request in as an enhancement. I would suggest if council is interested in this program, that we do it on a citywide basis and have HR look at the policies that need to get done. There may be some collective bargaining issues that Mr. Fitzpatrick wants to work through as well, and there's some discussion among staff on how that would get addressed. But those are things that we could work out internally before we bring something back to council. But, you know, one of the things I kicked around yesterday when I gave my early presentation was to, you know, if we could put some seed money in for a long-term amount of money to cover tuition reimbursement, take it out of fund balance and then draw it down over a period of years and perhaps put some more seed money as we go along. That way, we could have any, if we do this, what you'll see is there'll be a spike in usage, and then it'll level off after a while. So, I want to make sure that the initial spike doesn't create have and have-nots either. So, if we could use some fund balance, that might be appropriate because it would really be a one-time expense for the spike. But then, as it equalizes, then it would be a routine type of expense that we could budget, and it would flatten out the cost of such a program.
Could this, I guess, I'm supportive of the idea, but I'm also wondering if there's somewhat a repetitive or an overlap because... or an overlap because there is already forgiveness of the federal student loans in public service and nonprofits after a period of years of of documenting that that job in that field. And I guess the second part of that question is, could this be an either or in terms of tuition assistance and or additional, I don't know, down payment assistance if they purchase a home in the city?
I would ask council not to get caught in the weeds on that just yet. We still have a lot of research to do. And I don't have a lot of faith in that federal program. That's just my personal opinion.
Okay.
Because I I I have a child of my own who's collecting that information, and I suspect that in eight years, I'm not, I I've told him not to count on it for that very reason. So do a little bit of cynicism. Plus, that doesn't get them to school now. We need to get our people in school now. And so anything we can do, it's not going to cover everything, it's just going to cover a portion of it. So if they if they incur student loans, it would be because our loan wasn't sufficient enough. So I would ask you to to let us work through those issues and we'll when we come back, if you're inclined to do it, then we can work through those issues. And then Chief, the mayor had a second after that question that I thought was more appropriate for you.
Relative to the the public safety loan forgiveness, is that what you're talking about?
The second part of the question was whether this could be an either or, or if it would be attractive for an increased amount. We already have the five thousand dollar down payment assistance in in some of the areas of the city for sold on Ashkosh, but if this could be married up with an additional down payment assistance for purchasing a home in the city?
Yeah, I'd have to to think through that one. I don't know, you know, that I'd want to tie one to the other, you know, because we would the the people we're surveying now are incumbent employees that are already living somewhere. You know, so how do we get them this training, you know, for the now, you know, for these next several years where that down payment, you know, assistance probably is going to be more attractive to an entry level employee that's moving to Ashkosh for the question.
Yeah, I thought you had a different question, Madam Mayor, I'm sorry.
No, it was a question of if it could be either or or both.
Okay. Yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, I think that's a different issue in terms of this is about succession planning. I think your program that you're throwing out there as an idea is really more of a recruitment strategy.
Well, it's a recruitment and succession in that, you know, that also that commitment to the city. I think living in the city also shows an intention to, you know, stay in the department. But I I don't want to, you know, go go up into the weeds. I just wanted to ask if that was something that had been thought about.
Chief and and Mark, I've got a question on this, and I know I sent an email off to Mr. Fitzpatrick, and I see, I think he's think he's on the call. So if he wants to chime in to answer as well, that'd be great. I remember, was it last year or the year before we had, this was as a budget enhancement that came before council, I thought. And obviously didn't go anywhere. Fully supportive of it. Not only is it, you know, important to have a, you know, a lovely flow chart for the organization in terms of succession planning, but actually backing it up with making sure people are are educated and prepared professionally to to take over in in the upper management ranks. You know, we've seen that in different departments over the last few years that we've got to make sure we're 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 well staffed. I'm fully supportive of it. I think council probably be surprised that I'm really supportive of it. Mark's idea of of using some fund balance as a seed is a is a good idea that I was floating in my head as well. You know, having Fitzpatrick come back to us pretty quickly here with some more information would be really good in the next week or two, if possible, because you know, if we could use a little fund balance, I'm even willing to go up to, you know, seventy-five or a hundred thousand to really fund that as a drawdown than, you know, drawdown fund that maybe we won't have to put money into it for three or four years. But Fitz is going to have to give us some more information because, as Mark said, this is this is organization wide, not just exclusive to the OFD. I appreciate Chief Stanley bringing it to us because it's just another department saying we we need additional resources for our people. But if Fitz wants to chime in, I think it'd be good to hear from him, but I think we need more information from him for a a full organization plan.
The devil's in the details and the policy would really be the issue. Fitz, I I know you, I saw that some of the back and forth emails. My recollection is that last year, when we talked about some fund balance usage, we said, let's wait until after the the year is closed, and then we would look at funding things. And then COVID hit, and it was like, well, we didn't want to use our fund balance. The only thing we did fund with fund balance was the diversity training, but nothing else. This, I believe, was on the list, but Fitz, I don't know if you if you recall that.
Well, just after Matt reached out to me, I did ask Michelle to look into this because I recall us talking about it too. And it's been an initiative in our strategic plan for several years. So if not last year, if not this last year, as you recall, Mark, I know it's been a discussion that we've had in prior years, and I think one of the things that's just prevented us from going forward is trying to determine what we need and what the scope is in developing that policy. So everything you've said about the policy is right on. I think we have to make a decision about what we do. And you know, differentiating between training and a tuition reimbursement program is one facet of that. And then deciding how much we're going to have available. Even a nominal amount won't go very far for a tuition reimbursement program. So it's something that you know, we're going to have to look at pretty carefully, and I appreciate you also mentioning that, you know, this does have potentially collective bargaining implications too, so. But as I mentioned, Councilmember Muggerhour, you know, support for this is always appreciated because we're trying to recruit, retain all the employees we have, and this can only help.
Well, maybe we come back to this one towards the end of the day in terms of council's direction to to city manager and staff than I think as a council to to talk about a little bit more.
I think what it sounds like is didn't we need to have more information from from staff for a citywide application, or are you are you suggesting Councilmember Muggerhour, we only address the fire department's request for this at the end of the day?
I think we need to have discussion in general, so in either one that whatever route council wants to go, but right now, to eat up Chief's time on this particular issue as well as to keep on schedule, I think I think council should try to come back to this at the end of the day to give some better direction, just collectively, the seven of us. Obviously, I've taken up some time on on this issue. You have too. You know, there's five other council members that would probably like to to share some thoughts, but is is the exact moment right now the the best moment? Probably not.
And we also have the workshop on November fourth there. The council can give us additional direction on as well.
And I believe that we're supposed to get our our information in with regard to any recommendations by the thirtieth, right? Is that what we agreed on?
We do the thirtieth, and we would do the week after that as well.
Okay.
Councilmembers have have done, you know, I asked not to ask you not to do it on the Tuesday of, but the Friday before is still okay because then we can put it into a package for the council. If you recall, we basically have some decision packages for you to take a look at. And but this is one we can work on that I think we can address either at the end of the day, as Councilmember Muggerhour pointed out, or even up to, I would say up to October seventh or six, excuse me. November.
It just didn't seem fair to ask staff to to look at it citywide or city employee wide. You know, by the end of today.
This, there's appropriation, which is you're talking about now versus authorization. This would merely appropriate the money. This would not authorize the money. We would still have to come back to council with a policy that you are comfortable with. And 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 I've made sure, you know, Fitz has been aware of this since this has been going on, but COVID took them away from this. We need a formal policy on this. We just can't say, well, we got the money budgeted, let's do it tomorrow. We have to get a full thought out policy, but I think appropriating the money would be very helpful, and then that would sort of be the impetus for us to get the policy for you.
Thank you.
Chief.
All right.
Yeah, moving along.
Yeah. Are there more slides or can you unshare the screen?
I've got a couple more.
Oh, okay.
That's last enhancement I'd like to speak to, you know, was not submitted by us, it was submitted by administrative services to our benefit. That the fire stations continue to to age, they continue to fall into disrepair. You know, we made quite a few advancements yet last year with an enhancement to contract for preventive maintenance on things like the garage door and the HVAC systems and generators. One of the recommendations originally from the staffing study was to to hire an FTE under admin services to work on our facilities. We weren't able to to advance that last year. Completely understandable, you know, that admin services was kind enough to to move that enhancement to you again this year. But I know you have many decisions and difficult decisions on where to allocate finances, but this is still a a desperate need for the fire department, and I'm I'm imploring council to to help support that enhancement from admin services. Questions in regard to that? Okay, the last thing, very briefly, I'll touch on is capital improvement plan. You know, that's very static to to what we've had in years past with, you know, replacement schedules for ambulances and apparatus and fleet vehicles. You know, the needed generator replaced, and then the the training center is obviously the the biggest issue, you know, that's it's in the the capital improvement plan. Still unfunded in in twenty-two and twenty-three. That's, you know, I know and respect council's decision regards to borrowing, you know, and appreciate the increase in tolerance for debt around the CIP. But as you know, we continue to to work the the program that and the recommendations that the city manager and the the finance department has has proffered to you, I would like to just encourage and request respectfully that that we do keep that that in mind that the further out we we push some of those capital improvement plans, you know, the longer it takes before we can can further redevelop the training center. So with that being said, I thank you very much for your time. I sincerely apologize to you for over promising and under delivering that not only did I not end early, I went late. I would would ask a personal favor because I have an evaluation due. If you all could email or call the city manager and let him know how captivating you found this and valuable the presentation was, so he doesn't smash me for going longer, I'd really appreciate it. Again, thank you so much for your time. If you have any follow up questions, want more information, please don't hesitate to to reach out to to me, that myself and staff are always very eager to to help you in the decision making process. So with that, I don't have anything else. Thank you.
Thanks, Chief Stanley, and I don't I don't think that you deserve all the blame on that, given that we had a number of questions. Should not reflect on your review.
Fitz Fitz has taught me over the years, the term recency bias. You don't use a recent event to to do the evaluation. I'll I'll talk to him about all the other times he's talked over, but not this one. Thank you. Thank you, Chief. Anything else for Chief? We can probably still go to city manager and the council budget. I think we still have time before noon. If if it pleases the council.
I cannot see any of the other council members because the screen is overlaying it, so you'll
There, Mike could hog in the screen, so
All right.
we're good now, and I won't have that, so. What I'll do is I'll just, I'll I'll stay in order of pages in the book rather than, even though it says city manager, we also have the council budget. I'll just direct you to the first page after the general government tab, page seventeen. That's the council's budget. The council budget is is pretty straightforward. It's the our elected officials, the seven of you, as well as the cost for some of our memberships, including the League of Municipalities Chamber. Training, obviously, training was very curtailed this year. I think we had some other things in there. Diane had put put some of these numbers together, but conferences and training obviously has been scaled back for a lot of people. And as far as the salary, by policy, the council has directed staff to bring back immediately after a mayoral election. So we have a mayoral election coming up in April. After that, we will bring forward the resolution that was adopted by council several years ago was that immediately after the mayoral election, that the council may, at their discretion, create a committee to review the salaries of council members to see if any adjustment is. If that's the case, that would not impact the 2021 budget, so that's why you don't have to worry about it for from budget purposes. But just recognize that 2021 is the year in which that issue would be visited, and you would take action before December one so that if there was any change to council salary, you would essentially advertise that once residents of our community can take out nomination papers. It's sort of like a truth and disclosure about what the job pays. And it cannot be changed after that. It must be done for the for the term upcoming. It must be done before December one. And I think that's why the council did it. So just letting you know that that if there are any questions about adjusting council salaries, that's the process that works. Are there any questions about that issue or anything else in the council's budget with the line item detail is on page nineteen?
So, Mark, a question is that that's related to salary, but I know that at one point, I believe this was with the former council, we had some discussions about potential additional devices or separate cell phones. That can be discussed here, though, separate and distinct from any discussion on salary, right?
That would be a discussion. That's a policy issue for council. I don't think there was any consensus on that, but if if you wanted to talk about it, that's they would, this would be an appropriate time.
Just checking in with council members to see if they're okay with their devices or given the volume that we have had with phone, email and and other items this year, whether or not you felt that your devices served you or if you needed anything additionally?
The only thing I'll say in in this isn't that I'm I'm advocating for a separate cellphone, but I think we do have to get out to the public because there are times, I mean, my cellphone is used for both professional and also is the only number listed for for council because we don't, we don't have a landline and haven't for a while. So the one one thing that's come up where, you know, I noticed like people will say, like, reached out to council members and they didn't respond, and I know for a fact that there's been times, and I I could go back to every time there's been something coming up either before us or the county board, that my voicemail is full. Not even my clients can get ahold of me, and as you all know, especially working, you can only get to so many messages a day, and if you're in meetings, you you don't even see that your phone is full. So, you know, that's the only thing, it 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 would be, I think, incredibly expensive for us to have an additional cellphone or something like that, but I do think we have to communicate to the public that we also have times when volumes are high. And so so, yeah, so I just wanted to make that comment because it is something that I know people get frustrated. make that comment because it is something that I know people get frustrated at with us. But then also, you know, on the other side too, when you have your career or your business or things like that, it just seems to clog things up. And that's also email as well.
Well, I'll just say that I know that a number of folks have like been apologetic that have left voicemails either on our landline at home or on cellphone. And, you know, they may not be aware that we work out of our homes and use our personal phones. And I don't know if council has ever had a phone number that a voicemail gets checked and any, you know, kind of messages get transcribed. But I think most of us want to be available to and be responsive to folks. But I just wanted to bring that up if anybody felt that their personal devices were not sufficient to cover the volume that we've been experiencing in recent years.
Love to hear from other council members because I do feel bad. And to your point, Mayor, you know, we are, we are a service and should be at service to the public. But I'm noticing that, you know, I'm certainly having some challenges with just having a cellphone, but would love to hear if other council members are experiencing some of the same issues.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, I'm, oh, sorry, Lindsay. Go ahead.
Oh, thanks. I'll just echo what you said, Councilor Allison Asby. I think it has been difficult at times to keep up with the volume, but that's part of the job. I would say I'd be interested in having a separate cellphone only because I have a separate one for work, too. So having to manage three cellphones is a little much. But I think just the recognition of the volume at times and if there's some sort of way of whether it's communication or something to be able to manage that would be helpful.
Yeah, I agree with that sentiment. I think that not just us, but I think all professions right now are having to deal with with this new use of kind of their own, their own technology for their, their work. So I just don't think it'd be appropriate right now to go down that road through technology.
Sure. So, sorry, this is a council discussion. I can give you my thoughts, but I think Councilmember Peshal had already.
I think my situation's a little bit different, but maybe even similar for some people because like Councilmember Erickson, we're also public employees of some sort in regards to our professional lives. And so I actually take the other, the other side of that where I feel that separation from my personal life, my professional life and my elected life are really important and feel that, you know, a cellphone would actually be better managing that because my personal cellphone gets bogged down with all of my, my, my council and personal emails. And so it is, it is a little bit harder to manage that because I have to manage, depending on how many different email accounts I manage and in my, in my, in my personal life, you know, that can, that can be challenging. So, so I definitely see that there could be a rationale for, for some of us to want that access to that phone because it might make it easier for us to, to manage more elected, personal, elected, elected information on one device. So that's, that's my two cents. I, I do feel that it would help me manage the amount of communication better if I knew that it was, you know, ultimately coming into, into one device. So my two cents.
Madam Mayor.
City Manager.
Yeah. The only thing I would say about this discussion is that this year, you're probably not alone in how you're, how you're sharing these things. I think this more than any year, council members calling me and telling me about the number of calls they've gotten is just dramatically higher than I've ever seen from you in, since cellphones have been popular, so to speak. But it has gone up. With that said, you know, we haven't talked about this amongst my peers in terms of what other cities are doing with relative to their council members. If you'd like, we could do a little survey, research type of thing, even though it's not a compensation issue, nor were the tablets for the council. If the council wanted to wait until they created, you know, if they wanted to reassemble that group to look at wages, they could look at this issue as well. But I think we could do this in advance because it's not a compensation issue. It's really more of how can we help you be more effective? And I think Councilmember Erickson's comment, I don't know if I want how many, I only have so many back pockets. And so unless you're going to haul around a bunch of cargo jeans all day, you know, that's a challenge. Bob said, I can balance it. You know, you're both right. I can't tell you either of you were wrong. But if you'd like us to do a little research, I'd be happy to do it. And so just let me know what you'd like, like staff to do, and we'll be happy to assist.
Maybe you could.
Yes, the other piece. Oh, go ahead.
Oh, no, I was just going to say for somebody like Lindsay, maybe they have something like a cellphone holster.
I don't know.
I was not going to volunteer Diane to take all of our calls and give us messages by any means. But what I was also kind of curious about was, you know, you know, how inexpensive or expensive would it be if there were council members who chose to have a dedicated line with voicemail through city hall? I don't know if that works logistically, feasibly. But yeah, it would be appreciated if you could maybe survey what, you know, what others are doing. Not that it's unmanageable, but it is, it's very distracting.
I'm going to chime in a little bit too here. I happen to be in full agreement with Ms. Erickson. I don't have enough pockets for that many cellphones, nor do I think it actually makes us more efficient at doing our job. I think I appreciate what Councilmember Peshal, you know, said in terms of trying to, you know, create clear lines of, you know, I'm at work, I'm at home, I'm at council. But now, this is just me. I don't speak for anyone else. I'm always on. I'm always, I'm always available. And to be able to do that, it's one device. We, none of us, and this isn't talking about financial situations, but none of us pay for minutes, I believe, on a cellphone. We haven't done that in about 15 years. So in terms of cost wise, this isn't any more of a cost to council members personally, because a few minutes and a voicemail doesn't cost us anything more to do the work that we, that we signed up for. But another device, not worth it to me, nor is having a dedicated line because now I got to call in and try to figure out how to call people back. And guess what? I'm still calling them back on my cellphone. So it doesn't make a whole lot of sense to me to add additional devices. But, you know, I get it that this year has also been a very unique year. We've had some very interesting topics that have, that garnered a lot of public interest. And I'm thankful for the interest that people are actually getting engaged. I wish a few would give us a little, I wish a few would call us or maybe chime in a little bit on the budget when they get, you know, they get dialed in on some other issues, but they don't show up for some of the biggest things that we do right here today and yesterday. And over the next few weeks, we don't hear anything. So I just don't think we need more devices. But I, I can appreciate where, where the thoughts are coming from though, too.
Councilmember Asby, Allison Asby. Unmute. There you go.
Thank you. So I'm hearing whatever, what everyone is saying, and Council Jake didn't weigh in, but that's maybe because I can't see him. So maybe Mr. Crowsey has an opinion as well.
Yeah.
I think, I think perhaps what, what Mark could maybe do is maybe take a look because, you know, take a look at example, you know, with Bob and Lindsay. They both work similar type situations, are both in similar type situations, but how they react and respond or their needs may be very different. And I think that's the one thing like before, and I've seen the council change over the years, we're all different. Some work for somebody, some own businesses, you know, some, you know, whatever. And we've had those that are retired and we have those that are very actively, you know, have families and engaged. And so I think to just paint a broad stroke with a brush and say, this is what's working for council, I think is a little bit outdated. And so if Bob needs something different than I or Lindsay, or if Matt, you know, operates differently than, than Mike and Jake, I think we also have to be reasonable to take a look at that, too. Because moving forward, none of us are making this a career as a city council member, right? And so we also need to actively think how others are going to respond to recruit good talent from the community. So, you know, that's, that's what I would say. And, you know, obviously, again, I am not for necessarily purchasing money for another device just because of budget and those types of things. But I also know I operate differently and may have different needs than the rest of you who may need something. So maybe perhaps we take a look at that and say, you know what, you know, maybe at this point, even if we don't do it this year, we throw a little bit of money into the budget. Because we don't know what we don't know also about the environment we're in. And we do think that, you know, with COVID and to Mark's, Mr. Roloff's point, yes, it's been high, but we don't know what we don't know about COVID yet. So is this just a season that is done in January, February? Or does this go next year? I mean, we, we don't know. But I think a little bit of vision and foresight, and then how we all respond. Because again, we have another election coming up as well.
Yes.
And new faces and new needs. So.
And, and the other piece is, it may be that IT has a thought, you know, that the iPads, you know, have some kind of, you know, calling other than an app that, you know, that is secure. You know, there may be something out there that staff can, you know, come up with that serves a variety of needs. And I appreciate Councilmember Allison Asby recognizing that everybody has different needs and different demands.
I just wanted to chime in real quick. Yeah, Deb nailed it. I mean, we're all in different positions in our life. One phone works for me. It might not work for other people. I like having everything on my one device. I, I'm at work all day, then I get home, I'm with my kids. And at the end of the day, I check my voicemails. On my cellphone plan, I have unlimited voicemail. I don't know how much I'm paying extra for it, but my voicemail is never full. And I keep messages from years ago. So, I mean, that might be an option to look at. But one device works for me.
Well, thanks for the discussion. Does anybody else want to weigh in before we adjourn for lunch?
If you don't want to talk about my budget, I'm okay. But I think I did a great diversion for you guys to completely ignore my budget. But so, mission accomplished. It's the page right after councils. It's on page 20. The city manager's budget is basically Diane and me. The, the budget is, you know, obviously conferences and training. We probably overestimated because I'm not spending anywhere near $7,000. I think when Diane put this together, she still thought that I was still going to ICMA and still thought I was going to the League of Municipalities. And, and I think even the council's budget is probably a little overstated on the year end estimate. But, you know, I'm not going to spend anywhere near $7,000 because it's been impossible to spend, spend that money. There's nowhere to go. I've done a couple online conferences, but nothing like that. Anything for adjustments for my salary are subject to final council review and approval. And that's in the, that's in the unclassified account as well. So unless there's any questions about my budget, I think we also have to go to, there's, there's another one on, oh, hang on a second. It's not a lot, but I just want to point it out because it got moved to council as a category. And that is on page 157. It's called special events. Really what it is, it's July 4th fireworks. So page 157. And let's see, that's the 12,500 that is our share of the fireworks show that Festival Foods, you know, funds the other half. I think even the amount for this year was overstated because we did not have a cancellation fee, to my knowledge. But, but that's, yeah, page 157. It's 12,500 for half of the $25,000 July 4th fireworks show. And we're all crossing our fingers that we'll be able to do that next year. And that's really all I have on that account. So we're only seven minutes over.
Just a quick question, not that I want us to go over anymore. But do we, have we ever included key performance indicators for either the council or city manager budget? I'm just looking and didn't notice any or the 2021 goals.
There are, I believe there are some. Let me check with Courtney and Diane. We're switching over that Diane's going to be managing those instead of Courtney. And let me check on those. Thank you for bringing those up.
Thank you.
Because there should be, there should be some for everybody. So let me look at that for you. That's all I have unless there's any questions.
Mark? Mark? This is Russ on page 157 and 158. That, that's not 4th of July. That's unity and community.
Ah, okay.
I just wanted to correct that.
I'm sorry. I just made the assumption that it was, okay, unity and community. So.
Are you sure that's not combined? Because unity and community was only, I thought, $1,200.
No, the people in 404 are telling me that it's unity and community.
We budgeted 12,500 for unity and community? I don't, that doesn't.
I agree. I agree with the mayor. Let's take a look at that. I think we owe that, we owe an answer, Diane. Let's not just give it off the cuff. Yeah, because it said it was moved from the Parks budget to the council budget. That's why, Russ, I made the, that's where I inferred that that was for 4th of July. But let's take a look at it. We owe you that answer.
Okay.
All right. So it's 10 after. Is everybody good with trying to be back around 1?
If you need that extra 15 minutes, we'll let Ray know because Parks was supposed to start at 12:45. But we are, we're going to be done early because we already did city manager and council. So if you'd like to reconvene at 1, I don't think anybody will complain. We'll just let Ray know to go back 15 minutes.
All right. We'll see everybody back about 1 o'clock then.
Thank you. We'll see ya.